Good morning. I'm going to call the April 23rd, 2013 meeting of the Mendocino County Board of Supervisors to order. And we will begin with a call of the roll.
Supervisor Brown?
Here.
Supervisor McCowen?
Here.
Supervisor Pinches?
Here.
Supervisor Jirdy is absent. Chair Hamburg?
Here. And I'm going to ask Councilman Orenstein to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Clerk) With diligence to die, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda this morning is the adoption of a proclamation recognizing April as Autism Awareness Month in Mendocino County. And the sponsor is Supervisor Pinches. Supervisor Pinches, would you like to-
I sure would.
-read the proclamation?
This is a proclamation of the Mendocino County Board of Supervisors recognizing April 20th, 2013 as Autism Awareness Month in Mendocino County. Whereas autism spectrum disorders, ASD, are lifelong conditions which present medical, psychological, behavioral, and educational challenges that typically require interventions and service. And whereas autism spectrum disorders are now more prevalent than type 1 diabetes, Down Syndrome, or childhood cancer. And whereas approximately 1.5 million Americans live with an autism spectrum disorder. And whereas approximately 1% of American children between 0 and 17 years old have an autism spectrum disorder. And whereas autism spectrum disorders are the fastest growing development of disability in California. And whereas over 59,500 people in California receive services from the Department of Development Services for autism spectrum disorders. And whereas over 136 people in Mendocino County research services through Redwood Coast Regional Center for Autism Spectrum Disorders. And whereas 105 students with autism spectrum disorders receive special education services through Mendocino County Office of Education Special Education Local Plan area. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Mendocino hereby proclaim April 2013 as Autism Awareness Month in Mendocino County dated April 23rd, 2013. Dan Hamburg, Chair.
Okay. I think I didn't sign that one yet.
Yeah.
And is someone here to receive this proclamation? Would you like to come forward? Thanks. Do you want to give it to her? Would either of you care to make any comments to the board? Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you. And just give your names so we can get it on the record. Thank you.
Suzanne Valley, I'm the supervisor of the Children's Unit at Redwood Coast Regional Center.
I'm Sarah Costa, I coordinate the 0-3 early intervention program for Regional Center.
And so we just have a little, you have the first part. Autism Awareness-
If you wouldn't mind, would you step right up to the mic?
No problem.
So we make sure we get your voice on tape.
We have a little script here.
Okay, go ahead.
Autism Awareness Increases Early Identification and Intervention Which Can Greatly Improve the Long-Term Outcomes for People with Autism.
Autism Awareness Challenges Us to Commit to Work Together to Find Ways to Ensure That Everyone, Including People with Autism, Can Access Education, Healthcare, Employment, and Opportunities to Contribute to Our Community. People with autism, their friends and families, Redwood Coast Regional Center, and our community partners, thank you for proclaiming April 2013 as Autism Awareness Month in Mendocino County. Thank you very much.
Could you just hold on one second, see if any board members have questions for you? Or comments regarding the proclamation?
Yes.
Comments? Supervisor Brown?
Thank you, Chair Hamburg. I do appreciate Supervisor Pinches bringing forth this proclamation. Autism in our community is very important. Our children, if it's not recognized at an early age in being able to work with them, you know, it can be quite a problem as they grow. So I do appreciate the fact that we are recognizing this as a month to observe these disorders. Thank you.
You know, in my lifetime, I've seen where people with, folks with autism, it seems like they're leading a lot better, more productive lives than when I would have had a real good friend when I was not even a teenager. And it seems like he passed away years ago. But anyways, it seems like now individuals with autism have a more active and, I think we're making a lot of strides with it. Not enough, but a lot better than it was.
We're trying, we're getting better at identifying it much earlier. And the earlier the children receive the intervention, the better is the outcome.
I think that's why the numbers seem to go from 1 in 100 to 1 in 80 to 1 in 50, is because we're getting a lot better at identifying what autism looks like in order to be able to provide the services that we need to be able to provide in order to be able to have our children and then our adults in the community to have jobs and to be able to be productive.
Anyone else? I just wanted to say that I really appreciate this coming forward. I know when I first started studying the autism phenomenon, it was through a book by David Kirby, New York Times writer who wrote, wrote a book, I think it was in '06 or '07. And he was talking about the numbers at that point, I think it was 1 in 160. And, you know, now I'm seeing 1 in 100 and even more. And there seemed to be two schools of thought about why the numbers keep going up. And one is that it's the diagnosis and the ability to look at not only full-blown autism, but also, you know, what they call autism spectrum disorder, which is the whole range of things. But there's another school of thought that says that there's more autism because of the factors in the environment and in terms of treatments that are actually increasing these numbers. And do you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, for a long time, there was speculation about vaccinations having a part to play in autism and the fact that infants used to get a rather small number of vaccinations. And now it's, you know, it's, you know, 10 times, or I don't know, maybe not 10 times, but way more. And, you know, there's that speculation, which has even led to a danger that some people, you know, some mothers don't want to vaccinate because they're afraid that, you know, that which is not a good thing. I mean, vaccinations are important, but it's even gone that far to where mothers are going, hey, wait a minute, is there a connection here? Does the Regional Center look at any of those issues? Or, you know, do you have a position on those issues?
As far as the-
I mean, are there, for example, just looking at the environmental factors of autism?
It's still a lot of unknown. I mean, we do have people that are, you know, continue to research all of it, but a lot of it is unknown. And regarding the vaccinations, we would still encourage families to definitely, it's better to get the vaccinations than to not, but-
Right. I would agree with that, by the way. But, you know, there's even been that thing where mothers are going, wait a minute, you know, because there's been so much negative publicity.
There's more of a fear, I think. And so, you know, parents want to, they want to try to prevent it, but it may not be something that anything they can do to prevent it. So-
Yeah.
We receive emails every day about new research that's come out. So-
Yeah.
It's still one of those conditions that has a lot of unanswered questions.
Yeah. It's a tremendous amount of interest in autism. And I'm glad to see it, you know, the information come to this board and to the public through the board. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Supervisor McCowen?
I just-
Oh, is there someone else who care to speak? Yes, sir.
I have a-
Oh, yes, ma'am. Linda? Linda, come on up. Here's someone who knows something about immunizations, having given a few shots in her day.
Hi. I'm Linda Nagel, retired public health nurse, or semi-retired, actually. The question about a possible link between immunizations and, childhood immunizations and autisms has actually been debunked in recent years. Apparently, the research out of Britain that resulted in that finding, the researcher admitted to falsifying some of the data, and no other researcher has been able to show the same results.
This is Andrew Wakefield.
So I can't remember his name, but-
Dr. Wakefield.
Yeah. So it's been interesting, but the spin on, oh my gosh, immunizations can cause autism is a hard one to debunk after a dozen years or so of that.
Yeah, so maybe I'm just keeping it going. I'm talking about-
Well, especially if an opportunity is safe.
Okay, enough, enough about this. Anyone else have a comment? Anyone in the public? Okay, well, thank you very much. Really appreciate it. And we'll move on. Supervisor McCowen is the sponsor of a proclamation recognizing April 28th as Workers' Memorial Day in Mendocino County. Supervisor McCowen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Proclamation of the Mendocino County Board of Supervisors recognizing Workers' Memorial Day, April 28th, 2013. Whereas every year, tens of thousands of American workers are killed by workplace injuries and occupational disease. And whereas tens of thousands more are permanently disabled. And whereas millions more are injured or made ill. And whereas since 1970, when the Occupational Safety and Health Act was passed, workplace safety and health conditions have improved, but too many workers remain at serious risk of injury, illness, or death. And whereas concerned Americans are determined to prevent these tragedies by organizing Workers' Memorial Day on April 28th, 2013, a day chosen by the unions of the AFL-CIO as a day to remember and honor these victims of workplace death, injury, and disease. And by renewing our efforts to seek stronger workplace safety and health protections, better standards in enforcement, and fair and just compensation. And by rededicating ourselves to improving safety and health in every American workplace, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Mendocino hereby proclaims April 28th, 2013 as Workers' Memorial Day in Mendocino County and encourages attendance at the Saturday afternoon clubhouse at 5:00 PM, April 27th, to honor workers in and from Mendocino County who have been killed, injured, or permanently disabled on the job. Dated April 23rd, 2013. Signed, Dan Hamburg, Chair. And do we have someone here to receive this proclamation? Okay. I do know we have a very active local group that organizes the Workers' Memorial Day celebration every day. And again, that will be at the Saturday afternoon clubhouse, 5:00 PM, April 27th.
The reason is Tuesday afternoon or morning and everybody's working. So the-
I think that's a large part of it.
Yeah, but it is a great event. And I had occasion to attend a year, I guess last year's, and I think Carrie Brigham, isn't she one of the people that puts a lot of energy into it?
She's involved, Terry Blachowski, Dora Brynlee.
Yeah, so that's a great event.
And I do have a poster flyer, if anyone is interested in more information.
Great. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 2C, adoption of a proclamation recognizing May of 2013 as Child Care Providers Appreciation Month. And that's sponsored by Supervisors Brown and McCowen. And Supervisor Brown, I'd like to ask you to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Chair Hamburg. And it is an honor, as a working professional and mother of four, working most of my adult life, childcare providers were certainly very important in my life. So the proclamation of the Mendocino County Board of Supervisors recognizing May 2013 as Child Care Providers Appreciation Month in Mendocino County. Whereas 2,400 children from 0 to 5 are in childcare or preschool programs, and 1,758 children from 5 to 12 are in childcare or after-school programs. And whereas there are approximately 500 childcare providers and early childhood staff. And whereas research clearly shows that teacher interactions with children have the greatest impact on both their social and academic success. And whereas a well-trained, well-qualified network of staff dedicated to childcare is increasingly vital to the prosperity of our economy and our children's future. And whereas childcare and development services contribute over $6 million in grocery receipts to support major industries in Mendocino County. And whereas our children are our future workforce, our future leaders, and the future parents of our grandchildren. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Mendocino hereby proclaims May 2013 as Child Care Provider Appreciation Month in Mendocino County. Dated April 23rd. Signed, Dan Hamburg, Chair.
Do you want to present that to-
Yes, is anyone available?
I think we have several people here. Yeah. We have Penny Walker, we have Pat Taggerson, and we have Janice Sacher. Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, we do.
All right. And here you go.
Thank you.
And I'd just like to ask each of you to speak, whichever order you would like. Okay, Penny?
My name is Penny Walker, and I am here with other members of the Childcare Planning Council of Mendocino County. It appears that today is a day where you're recognizing children in many aspects. April is also Early Childhood Awareness Month as well. Often, we have celebrated in the past week of the young child. This year, we're focusing on the providers for those young children. And first of all, I would like to thank the Board of Supervisors for your past support of last year's budget process. That was a very difficult, tricky time for us, and we are very happy that this year there are no further cuts. However, in the last couple of years, there have been 25% funding cuts to childcare in Mendocino County overall. We're hoping to recoup some of that, to restore some of that funding through the budget process this year, but that may not be possible. That cut represents about 397 childcare slots. So that's almost 400 children that are not receiving care now because of these cuts. We also want to thank you for your support of opposing the governor's plan for realigning childcare funding to the counties. We discussed that with you last year, and you were in agreement that that would not be a wise idea. Unfortunately, that idea is still bumping around Sacramento, so we need to keep on top of that and be aware of the progress or lack of, hopefully, that idea. Head Start programs in our county are facing a new challenge. The impact of the sequester this year has been ongoing. And as the sequester crisis continues, Head Start is beginning to look at some serious cuts. However, we are very hopeful that this will change, that it will flip because of President Obama's new initiative for early education that he's hoping to promote. And we have Janice Sacher here from Head Start to talk a little bit more about specifically how that affects her program.
Penny, before you leave the mic, are there any questions that people want to ask Penny? Because you've been doing this in this valley for a long time, mostly through the college, of course.
Right. You were one of the first people I met when I first came.
Yeah, I remember meeting you at the church.
But I would add that the rest of us have learned that if Penny asks us to do something, we say yes.
We say, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
But Penny, you said 400 childcare slots?
Almost.
Is that, that's in Mendocino County alone?
Yes.
And so are some of these parents on TANF?
Correct.
I mean, how are they, I mean, TANF replaced AFTC, and the thinking mind TANF was that, you know, temporary assistance, and that very quickly, single moms or even single dads were going to get some training and get off to work. And so how are these-
But even when they enter the workforce, they still are at an income level where they're needing subsidized help with childcare. And those are the slots that have been cut, the subsidies to working families for their childcare.
Okay, so how are these people supposed to move into the workforce when they have no childcare?
Well, it's very difficult. You know, the programs have worked with families as best they can to try to keep the families that we have, but what we don't know is families who would have come, who haven't been able to find spots. And what we fear is that there's a lot of low-quality, underground makeshift arrangements that, you know, families have to put together because they are going to have to work. So that's our fear.
Where the children may or may not be being nurtured or even kept in a protected environment.
Exactly. Too much TV, et cetera.
Yeah, yeah. Supervisor Pinches?
Well, I'd just like to put a plug in here for grandparents, because I think the grandparents are playing a major role in what's going on. And actually, I don't think you can have a better childcare provider than the grandparents.
I would totally agree, and I hope you could be one soon, but-
From what I see out there, there's a whole lot of grandparents out there who are thinking they could enjoy their Social Security check and kickback, and they're spending a lot of the time taking their grandkids and, you know, and friends of their grandkids. I mean, it's, but kudos to all the grandparents out there and the great-grandparents, because they're the ones that are picking up the slack.
I agree, and I, but I do want to emphasize that that's still somewhat makeshift, because grandparents sometimes have health issues.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, so it's not something that the parent can always count on.
Yeah, but your grandparents get up and do it, no matter if they feel like it or not, they do get up and do it.
I think Supervisor Pinches is speaking from experience.
Yes.
Which is hard to argue with.
Pat Taggerson is commuting to San Francisco to do the same thing quite often, so.
Yeah. Okay, well, that's a good segue. Janice?
Hi, I'm Janice Sacher, and I'm a Head Start teacher at the orchard site where we have 40 children, two classrooms, all-day program. There's only two all-day programs, classrooms in the UCAIA. I think mostly what I'm seeing with our families who I see day-to-day, I have foster families that have some of our children, I have CPS children, I have grandparents that are taking care of their children, I have other families bringing children because they don't have transportation, what have you. I see a lot of stress when they come back from the weekend. The children are different than when they had that consistent routine and know what to expect and have that environment where they're learning. I'm so proud of what our teachers have taught the children, the five-year-olds that are going to kindergarten now, they're actually just writing all these wonderful words, you know, "Teacher, how do you spell the word ocean?" You know, and they see the letters and they write the big word ocean, and they got this huge smile and accomplishing, you know, they're mathematicians, they're learning algebra. Just soaking up their arts and their social skills are major. They know how to talk to each other at three and four years old, even if they just have to put up a hand because they can't speak or get the words out, but they know how to say "stop." A lot of the children are children that don't speak, you know, that have IEPs that we've recognized. We've had autism children. My grandson is very autistic. But to recognize those, like you spoke about, getting that intervention as soon as possible and helping these families, these parents are desperate, some of them, they're in tears crying because they've been in domestic violence, or, you know, dad was arrested, or what have you. These children are in these situations. Grandparents, I'm a grandmother, and I would love to have my children up here. My daughter is a licensed provider in Santa Rosa, and she has these children that don't speak. And I said, "You know, Desiree, you've got this wonderful home in rich environment for some of these children that may have to go into programs that have 30 children," you know, "and where would this child, this child would be in a little corner somewhere, just overstimulated by the noise and by just all of the other children." So I'm just here to express my worries about cuts, because the classrooms will go away, they have gone away, and families are struggling desperately and doing whatever they can do to have their children safe. But the children are also hungry. They are eating food like you would not believe, and it's a sad situation when you don't even have enough food to feed the children, that you have this wonderful nutritious program in Head Start situations. And they're learning all about nutrition and great food, but I'm telling you, these kids, it's different. They are hungry. And, you know, we're giving them clothing and just a pair of shoes to wear. I had a little guy come in with a pair of girl shoes on that were huge for him. They didn't have shoes, you know. So Head Start is, and I think I speak for all of the programs of quality education, that it's not just, you know, educating the children, which is, we're educating parents also and teachers. I'm a mentor site. I have one of my mentees here, just to bring her to show the process, to advocate for early childhood education. Thank you.
Thanks, Janice.
Questions?
Any questions of Janice? Okay.
Well, you know, I got this bigger question. We're kind of dealing with the, kind of the result. I think we need to get back to what is the problem here? Is it better jobs? Is it keeping people in education so they can get a better job? What is, you know, we spend a lot of money-
It's education.
...billions of dollars on the trying to fix, you know, to deal with the problem. But are we really getting to where the problem is? And it seems like we're not very successful in that.
It's education and self-esteem from an early age on. You know, how do you feel about yourself? Are you going to be a leader? Are you going to be that child that has to steal something because, you know, he doesn't know how to get out there? I think that's a huge part of the beginnings of childhood and feeling good about yourself and knowing, "I can do this." You know, "Teacher Janice, look at me, I'm up here, I can do it," you know. And I think as far as, yes, where are we? We're, you know, people are struggling, and they don't have good jobs, they don't have the education, they don't have the degrees, they don't know how to go out and do a resume or, you know, go online now and fill out a Caltrans, you know, exam test or what have you. But I think for my own personal, I was homeless when my son was two weeks old. I was, it's 25 years ago, but I had a home-based Head Start program. I went back to school, I quit school when I was 15, went back to school, I got a degree, and that's what happened to me. So it's education in my eyes, so.
I know this is not a school board meeting, but I really believe, you know, education is the key, but it's, you know, everybody thinks about getting to college degrees and everything. There's 50% of our kids don't go on to college, and I think we're not doing near a good enough job in the vocational area, whether we are in our schools, whether it's high school programs or junior college programs. I see a real void there. I mean, right here in this county-
I think it's a partnership with the family, too.
Right here in this county, one of the best-paying jobs in this county is having a good driver's license and be able to drive a truck. Right now, today, there's a huge shortage in licensed, good licensed truck drivers out there, right here in this county.
I think pretty soon County Council is going to tell us we're not germane to childcare providers appreciation month. Thank you very much, Janice. Pat?
Yes, I'll try and be quick. I do think it was germane in a way, because what we know is the children who are in high-quality early childhood programs, where they're college-educated providers. Karen, our college student who's being mentored at the Head Start Center with Janice is one example of someone who's going to get a degree in child development. She's going to have experience before she's ever hired, and she will be able to assess children's abilities where they are now and develop learning plans for them to make sure that they have the skills that they need to be successful in elementary school. And right now, a study done by the first five, commissioned by the first five, commissioned in Mendocino County, showed that less than 50% of the children in third grade in Mendocino County are at grade level. And we know that a lot of the preparation happens in these early years, so we want to really acknowledge the importance of building those foundation skills. But I think the other thing is, we do have school-age childcare programs, and those have been documented to reduce juvenile delinquency, substance abuse problems with children, as well as reinforcing their continued development of their school- have been documented to reduce juvenile delinquency, substance abuse problems with children, as well as reinforcing their continued development of their school skills with study halls that are supervised and that sort of thing. But less than one-third of the children in Mendocino County are in these high-quality programs. We have a huge group of children in the county who are not getting these services. And like John Pinches said, many of them are patch, parents are patching together programs that utilize grandparents, and I know I take days off from work and commute to San Francisco so that I can alternate with maternal grandmother of my grandchild to provide that care for her, and I see her thriving, but we're both, you know, we're both highly educated and we have the flexibility to some degree, but I'm still working, many grandparents in our county are still working. So I think that our families are doing an amazing job of patching together supports while they pursue their education or go to work and raise their families, but we need to do more to ensure that every child has access to quality education. And one of the unfortunate, unfortunate results of the governor's budget final discussions last summer was that for the first time in history, the state preschool program, which has been a free program to income-eligible children, a three-hour-a-day educational enrichment program, it's not childcare, it's, it's a pre-kindergarten program, is suddenly charged, having to charge fees of families. And I know, once again, the first five Mendocino Commission came up with a scholarship fund to help some of these families who were suddenly hit with having to pay, and yet they're very low-income families, and they want their children to get the school readiness, and if they couldn't come up with the extra money out of their own pockets, their children lose that opportunity. So we encourage you to continue to be aware and vigilant when proposals come before our state or our federal government to enhance the services that are available to these young families and our families of young children, and we really thank you for recognizing the importance of the skilled childcare provider in the development of young children. Thank you.
Thanks, Pat. Thanks to all of you for coming in. Penny?
Just one last thing, I did leave some information with you-
Right.
...about the economic impact of childcare, and this is very significant in our county as well. We know that for every dollar spent in the childcare arena, we're saving seven dollars of other money that might be spent in special education, juvenile justice, welfare, et cetera, as that child matures. So we wanna make sure you get, get that as well.
Thank you. Hold on, Supervisor Cowan?
I just, one more comment, I really do want to thank you for bringing forward this proclamation or for bringing it to us to honor the childcare providers and, you know, the economic impacts you talk about are, you know, direct economic benefits to the community, but the other part of it is, if we could adequately fund, you know, childcare and, which is often directly linked with early childhood education, we could really reduce our, our costs for juvenile hall and probation and prison. You know, and the state has finally figured out, well, gee, it's more cost-effective to keep people out of prison and try and keep them in their local community in different programs. Well, then how much more cost-effective is it to provide the resources to the families and children to, you know, really measurably decrease the number of people that are gonna get caught up?
To say nothing of their productivity as they become workers instead of prisoners.
Right.
And, and I wanna just make a little segue as well to the child abuse issue, which I know there are other people here to address, but with good quality childcare, we're going to have less stress on families and therefore less of an issue around that as well. Thank you.
So, thank you all again.
Thank you. Okay. Supervisor Brown?
And I would like to, um, I just would like to say that on May 3rd, there is going to be a celebration of the early childhood educators and childcare providers at an event, I think it's a Hawaiian luau. So, I hope you display the proclamation.
Okay, the next item before us is a proclamation recognizing May 2013 as Mental Health Month in Mendocino County, and I would like to read that proclamation. Whereas since 1949, Congress has officially recognized May as Mental Health Month, and whereas serious mental illness such as major depression, bipolar disorder, schizophrenia, obsessive-compulsive disorder, severe anxiety disorder, borderline personality disorder, and post-traumatic stress disorder affect one in every four people annually and touches almost every family in Mendocino County. And whereas mental health is the underlying base for cognitive and communication skills, learning, emotional growth, resilience, and self-esteem, and whereas untreated mental illness is the leading cause of disability and suicide and imposes high costs on government in emergency medical care, long-term nursing home care, unemployment, housing, and law enforcement, including juvenile justice, jail, prison, and court costs, and whereas mental health is critical for our personal vitality as well as that of our families, businesses, and communities, and whereas the Mendocino County Health and Human Services Agency is committed to transforming the way mental health services are provided to include effective treatment, support, early intervention with a help-first rather than fail-first approach, and community wellness and recovery centers where clients can find hope, empowerment, personal responsibility, and a meaningful role in life. And whereas Mendocino County individuals, nonprofit, and public agencies and other organizations and entities have made commitments to help those suffering from mental illness, and whereas proper treatment, including integrated care management, is a priority in Mendocino County to prevent unnecessary incarceration, hospitalizations, inadequate county placement, and to promote wellness and recovery. And whereas it is imperative that we work to eradicate the stigma and discrimination associated with mental illness and work together with compassion to create a mental health system where access is easier and services more effective. Now therefore being resolved, the Board of Supervisors of the County of Mendocino hereby proclaims May 2013 as Mental Health Month in Mendocino County. And I know that Jim Shaw is here, maybe both you and Tom Penizato could come up and receive this. And Tom, of course, is our mental health director, and Jim Shaw is the chair of the Mental Health Advisory Board.
And let me just present this to that far. No, we can't, we're talking. It's a curly one there. Oh, sure, Janine Miller? Doug, you wanna come up? Brian, you wanna come up? It's a park. And I'm not sure how I present.
Thank you for the proclamation. Good morning, Chair Hamburg, members of the Board of Supervisors, CAO Carmel Angelo and our County Council. Mental Health Awareness Month is a time when advocates and activists across the country draw attention to the mental health issues that affect as many as one in four Americans. Today, more people die from suicide in the United States than from traffic accidents, homicides, and we lose twenty-five soldiers to suicide for every soldier lost in combat. Pretty tragic. Unfortunately, because of the stigma associated with mental illness, many people are too ashamed or embarrassed to seek the help they need for themselves or their loved ones. Mental Health Awareness Month is a time when we work together to break through the stigma, we express compassion for those who struggle with mental health issues, and we draw attention to the proven methods that can help change their lives for the better. I'd like to spell out too, or shout out, I guess, on this proclamation, the concept of integrated care management. Symbolically, I asked our team to come up, our Dr. Millers, our program lead, Doug Gurkin, the agency chief financial officer, certainly Brian brings the overview of all their services that we help and help to integrate with our children's services, with mental health services, et cetera, et cetera, and certainly Jim Shaw, our board, mental health board commissioner, who also represents, shall I say, the conscience of our communities. Specifically, I'd like to share, integrated care management has been demonstrated this past number of months through the eleven o'clock court calendar, through the working together of a collaboration of a number of community providers. Just list a few of them, Manzanita House Hospitality Center, McCabbin Hillside Clinic, a collaboration with the public defender, the district attorney, the Superior Court through Judge Mormon, gosh, who am I missing? Mental health staff, substance use staff. All of us working together as a team, we've able, we have been able to make some impacts. To this point, I believe we have four referrals, and we've had immediate impact on certain functions such as reduction in jail time. Some of our referrals from mental health court have come through the court or through the county jail. Those are items that we look forward to continually to improve and move forward as we collaborate and move forward with our, transformation of our system.
Thank you, Tom.
Good morning. Is this mic working?
Yep.
All right. On behalf of the board, we'd like to thank the supervisors, the sheriff, public DA, Public Defender's Office, Ukiah and Ten Mile Court, the public and private clinical sector, and the community for, I guess, coalescing a greater awareness and sensitivity about a broader and more diverse, diverse mental health paradigm over, I think, the last eighteen months to two years. I'd also like to particularly thank, commend Terry Rogers, who is our Behavioral Health Administrative Support Person, who I think without, we would barely function. The board is comprised of a lifetime of experience with consumers and service clinical technicians. We are almost a full board, thank you very much. We are meeting in Covelo next month, May 16th at 10:00 AM at Yuki Trails, and we have two seats available in the Covelo in Mr. Pinches' district. And we have current representation from Point Arena, Guadalajara, Little River, Mendocino, Fort Bragg, Willits, Ukiah, and Redwood Valley. So we are becoming a full board with, with good representation throughout the county. I, I just wanted to make a quick, a brief statement, I wasn't, I found out yesterday I'd be making a statement. But I guess it's my vision that de-stigmatizing mental illness, raising awareness of mental illness, and education about cultural diversity, which is, I think, really important in our county, because different cultures view mental health and mental illness differently and accept or receive, accept services differently. I hope that that, you know, that results in a more compassionate recognition, intervention, and treatment for consumers. To paraphrase something I heard Sheriff Almond say, and to expand a little bit on what he said, if I've given the latitude, is that we enjoin the community, families, the private and public sectors, schools, the judiciary, law enforcement, clergy, and the government to collaborate to optimize the recognition, treatment, and continuum of care and intervention for consumers in the county. I don't wanna, you know, carry on about the allocation of resources, but it's always an issue, and really, that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Okay. Hold on just one second, Jim, and see if there's any questions from board members.
I, I do have a statement. Thank you. There's hardly a family that goes untouched by mental health issues within their circle of, of loved ones. And I wanna say to you, Jim, thank you so much, and the rest of the board that are appointed are mostly volunteers, and I appreciate all the work that you do. You were my, one of my appointees, and then we got you in the right district when Dr. Grinny left, and I do appreciate the fact that you have stepped up to, to chair the advisory board, and I just wanna say thank you.
Thank you very much, and the board, thank you all for your flexibility in the appointments. It's important that we have a board and provide a forum that's really paramount to information from mental health services and input from the community, because that sort of really guides our discussion, our research, and our advisements to the Board of Supervisors. Thank you.
And Jim, I also wanna thank you for stepping up to the plate. You were not campaigning very hard to be chair of the Mental Health Advisory Board, and you, you accepted the, you know, the wishes of the members of the board, because you obviously have leadership skills and you're, you're a really dynamic chair and you, you keep us moving. Still, our meetings are going to four hours. We talked about that yesterday, that we need to figure out a way to get them down a little bit, but it is a really good board to work on. We've, the recruitment efforts which you and, and John Wetzler led were very successful. You know, we reached out to the community and we filled a lot of those empty spots, and not just with bodies, but with people who really have, you know, impressive backgrounds and experience and are really lending to the discussion. And I, I do think we're moving forward with mental health. The Mental Health Court that my colleague Supervisor Cowan, you know, put a lot of work into, I think, has been a success, and I think there's other successes ahead of us down the line. So, you know, thanks to you, Tom, and, and Jim, thanks to you and the entire Mental Health Advisory Board.
Thank you very much. If you'll permit me to speak to the public, you know, you don't have to be a member to attend the board, we have a lot of stakeholder agencies that attend and a lot of consumers that attend, and I believe that we can develop a greater conscience and direction with more members and more participation from the community. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you, and thanks to our department staff also.
Okay, the next item, Supervisor Brown, sponsoring the adoption of a proclamation recognizing May the 5th as California 4-H Centennial Celebration Day in Mendocino County. Supervisor Brown?
Thank you, Chair Hamburg, and I see that we have a couple of our 4-H members in the audience. Would you please step forward by the podium as I read the proclamation? Thank you. It's a proclamation of the Mendocino County Board of Supervisors recognizing the California 4-H Centennial Celebration in Mendocino County. Whereas 2013 is the centennial year of the California 4-H Youth Development Program with more than seventy-three thousand four hundred youth and thirteen thousand four hundred adult volunteers active in 4-H programs in the state of California. And whereas the 4-H program provides youth-adult partnerships and youth-centered educational programs available through local clubs, after-school programs, and camps. And whereas the University of California Division of Agriculture and Natural Resources, a land-guarant university, delivers the 4-H Youth Development Program through the California Cooperative Extension System with a historical reputation of dedicated staff overseeing the delivery of the program at a local level, supervised by outstanding adult volunteers who contribute countless hours and effort each year educating our community's youth. And whereas, the 4-H Development Program in Mendocino County, reaching five hundred youth and two hundred volunteers, annually provides a unique opportunity for young people to develop life skills through hands-on learning experiences, including educational workshops, project work, presentation experiences, camps, conferences, before and after-school programs, and other events at the local, county, district, state, national, and international levels. And whereas, 4-H members pledge their heads, their hearts, hands, and health to the improvement of their club, community, country, and world, working with educational learn-by-doing projects that put into practice new skills and science as they strive to make the best better, as vowed through the motto of 4-H. And whereas, the citizenship and leadership training which 4-H members receive in this program builds skills that help them thrive as competent, confident, caring leaders of character, contributing to their communities, and becoming a valuable asset to our democratic way of life as adults. way of life as adults. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Mendocino encourages all to support the 4-H Development Program that has and will continue to uniquely prepare young people to step up to the challenges of a rapidly changing world for the next hundred years. And be it further resolved that the Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims May 5th, 2013, as the California 4-H Centennial Celebration Day in Mendocino County, dated April 23rd, 2013. Sign, Dan Hamburg, Chair.
I can never remember the 4-Hs.
Mm-hmm.
Well, my name is Nadine Boer, and I'm a project leader and have been a community club leader for Yukaya. And right now I serve as a vice president for the Leaders Council. And I thank you so much for your support of the 4-H program and over the years. And listening today was sort of a theme about youth, and we are about youth. And we do educate and with, with our children and also our families. The program provides skills for all of us. And so we all continue to grow. And in preparing for our centennial for California, I've come across many, many quotes that have been said about 4-H in the past. Actually, it was started in 1902. So there's many quotes and most of them relate to that it's the greatest youth development program ever developed. And it has affected not just children in our county, state, nation, it's affecting children in the world as well. And so thank you very much for continuing your support so we can have this program here in our county. And we've only brought two kids today because it's star testing, and these are both our seniors. And so they were excused, so they were able to come today. So again, thank you.
Anyone else here to take the mic? Don't be shy.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Linda Edgington. I am the only paid staff for 4-H in Mendocino County. And we are, we fit into this day really well as far as all the proclamations, because what we do is out-of-school education. And it's research-based, because we need support from Board of Supervisors at our county level, which we greatly appreciate, the University of California at the state level, and the United States Department of Agriculture at the federal level. So we come with depth. And we've been here a while. And thanks to you and to our, our members that I'm finding, I've been in the program long enough, my 4-Hers are coming back to be volunteer leaders. So to me, that says a lot for the program. We have lots of great leaders and I like, thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you, Linda. And would any of our seniors like to say something?
Hi, my name is Megan Watzel.
Different kind of senior than we often have here. Got a bunch of seniors up here, but...
Yeah, so, hi, my name is Megan Watzel. I just want to also echo the, thank you for your recognition and support. I started 4-H in sixth grade and through it, I've been able to gain so many skills. I've had many opportunities. I've actually been a director of Lake and Mendocino County 4-H camp for the past two years. I've had so many opportunities, I've got to expand my skills in public speaking and kind of patience, working with a whole bunch of different people, volunteers. It's been a lot of fun. And as I go off to college, it's been great looking back on how much 4-H has impacted my life as I move forward in my own life.
Thanks a lot.
What's your project this year?
Picking sheep.
Sheep?
Yeah.
What kind?
I haven't got it yet. It's, it'll be a market sheep, but probably a white-faced lamb, so.
Nice.
Hi, my name's Audie Boer. I would just again like to thank you all for recognizing us, well, the centennial. And also, this is my ninth year in 4-H. I started in the fourth grade, I want to say. And just echo what Megan said, it's been a great experience for me, public speaking. I went to state presentation day, which is public speaking, and that was just a really great experience that has helped me in interviews and for scholarships and everything. I just want to thank you all for recognizing us.
Well, thank you very much.
What's your project?
It's our pleasure. What's your project?
I'm doing segmented woodchurning, which is woodworking. And then welding, and I did a hunter's safety project.
Supervisor Brown.
Thank you, Chair Hamburg. And I would like to announce again that May 5th, there'll be a special celebration and it'll be at Hopland Field Station. I invite my colleagues to join me. It'll be a fun day. Every club in the county will have some type of participation, like the Mendocino Spartans will do a drumming pro, show their drumming project as a part of the musical. And also Roy Beek, who's a part of that club, will either be on the violin or fiddle.
I'm going to show you the difference between the...
Oh, he's gonna, oh, okay. And it's part of Stravaganza Day, and there'll be wonderful exhibits. There'll be a fashion show review and of both past projects that were made, clothing projects and current. There'll be a wonderful exhibit about the history of 4-H since it started in Mendocino County. And then a favorite of mine is going to be, Arlene Shippey is going to speak, and she's going to take us on a lion hunt. And the lion hunt was one of the most popular programs with Uncle Rod Shippey at camp along with his guitar. So to go back through that again, it'll be a great time.
Nice.
If you're able to come, we'd love to have you join us and see what we're all about. It's a reunion of sorts and it's, it's amazing. And talking with a lot of these alumni...
Speak to the microphone.
Talking with these alumni from the 50s, these all-stars, they have gone on to contribute to our community. They've, you know, they come back and they're our leaders. And it's, it's just kind of reaffirming my belief that this is such a valuable youth program. And thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't think 4-H allowed any fiddling around.
4-H is more than you can imagine.
And I, I wasn't going to say this, because I'll probably get in trouble, but I think it's a violin in Yukaya and it's a fiddle in Leightonville.
Oh, you're funny.
Thank you. And I hope, we hope to see you there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, our last proclamation is recognizing the human race in Mendocino County, May 4th. The sponsors are Supervisors Brown and McCowen. I'm going to ask Supervisor McCowen to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Proclamation of the Mendocino County Board of Supervisors recognizing Human Race Day in Mendocino County, May 4th, 2013. Whereas the human race is a nationwide community fundraising event for nonprofit organizations. And whereas the human race is organized locally by the Volunteer Network of Lake and Mendocino County. And whereas nonprofit organizations and businesses recruit walkers, runners and/or pledge gatherers to raise funds for the nonprofit. And whereas the nonprofit organizations receive a minimum of 80% of all monies collected. And the Volunteer Network receives the remaining percentage to defray the costs of organizing, coordinating and staging the human race. And whereas this year's human race will be a 5K run and walk through the neighborhoods of downtown Yukaya. And whereas the human race is a family and community-oriented event that is a significant source of fund for the participants and fundraising for local nonprofits. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Mendocino hereby proclaims May 4th, 2013, as Human Race Day in Mendocino County, dated April 23rd, 2013. Dan Hamburg, Chair. And is anyone here to receive this proclamation? So I think either Supervisor Brown or I will present it. Supervisor Brown?
Absolutely. So you tuck it in your file and bring it along the day of the race.
At May 4th, Alex Thomas Plaza, beginning at 8:30?
Well, I have to be there at 7:00. I'm one of the volunteers working it. So I'm not sure exactly what time it starts, and I didn't bring the information with me.
Probably around 8:30 is my guess.
Yeah, I think it's 8, 8:30, yes.
So, thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience who wanted to speak to this? Okay, if not, thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is public expression for items that are not on the agenda. Is there anyone here to address the board under public expression? Seeing no one, we'll move on to the consent calendar. First, I need to ask the clerk if proper notice has been given.
Proper notice has been established, yes.
Okay. Do board members have any items they would like to remove from the consent calendar? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Okay. Supervisor Pinches, Supervisor McCowen, all in favor of approving the consent calendar, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All nay. Okay, moving on to item 5C, which is the discussion and possible action regarding Brook Trails Ad Hoc Committee, recommended scope and timeframe for issues related to the Brook Trails Township and the CSD. And that is item 5C. And I believe Mr. Knopf is just coming in the door to, to lead us off on this issue. Good morning, Kyle.
Good morning, Chair Hamburg, members of the board, Kyle Knopf with the executive office. Let me first give a quick recap on the history of this item. On June 11th, 2012, the board held a notice public hearing on the discontinuance of the teeter plan for the Brook Trails Township Community Services District. And based upon advice from the county's debt committee, the board discontinued the direct assessments of the BTCSD, the Brook Trails Township Community Services District, from the teeter plan. This was identified at the time as the most cost-effective method to mitigate the issue of several tax-defulted properties within the BTCSD and their inability to sell at public auction. At that time, the board directed staff to further investigate the discontinuance of the teeter plan privileges for the BTCSD, including discontinuance of the ad valorem property taxes for the district. On March 26th of this year, the board received an update on the issue and the auditor's office informed the board that there was no cost-effective manner to discontinue the ad valorem property tax. Subsequently, the board directed staff to return with recommendations to form an ad hoc committee and potential scope options were identified. On April 9th, 2012, the board appointed Supervisors Pinches and McCowen and essentially directed the committee to engage in a scoping session and return to the board today, April 23rd of 2013. The ad hoc committee met on April 12th and explored three main components. The ad hocs timeline, composition and scope as described at the prior board meeting. On the issue of the committee's scope, several topical areas were discussed, including discontinuance of the ad valorem property taxes for the BTCSD, teeter plan debt elimination, parcel consolidation, impacts on the housing element and the Brook Trails second access. What became apparent fairly early on for the committee is that the committee's main focus would need to be on the issue of parcel consolidation and intergovernmental relations between the BTCSD and the county. The lot merger process itself could tie into several of the aforementioned topical areas, especially the impact on the county's housing element. But that the main objective of the ad hoc should be to identify recommendations to move the lot merger process forward. What tools are available to the county and what deliverable recommendations could be brought back to this board for your consideration. In terms of the timeline for the ad hoc committee, we are requesting to return to this board within 60 days to provide a report and recommendations on deliverables to meet the objectives of moving the parcel consolidation process in Brook Trails forward. That would place the committee's return to the full board by June 18th of 2013, just prior to the end of the fiscal year. In terms of the composition of the ad hoc, it is recommended that Supervisors Pinches and McCowen remain the sole voting members, and that two members of the BTCSD board be invited to attend the meetings of the ad hoc committee. County staff utilization will be on an as-needed basis. The executive office would like to thank staff from the following departments for their participation in the ad hoc meeting on April 12th. Those departments include Department of Transportation, Planning and Building Services, Assessor Clerk Recorder, Treasurer Tax Collector, County Council and the Auditor Controller's Office. With that said, I'll return the presentation to the board.
Thank you very much, Kyle. Supervisor Pinches, you want to lead up?
Yeah, just to start off, and I wanted to drop some time for Supervisor McCowen, but I think one of the important parts of this is the ad valorem tax. We basically dropped that as an issue because it's, as Kyle just stated, there's no real way for the auditor to come down with it and assess estimates. The savings would be only about $17,000 and the cost of doing that would, would probably more than that. Isn't that right, Mary? So that's probably the real significant part of what the first meeting was about. I think it's imperative that we get two elected members of Brook Trails Board in on our next ad hoc meeting, because to get some input to them and also from them. So I don't know, I guess the only discussion is Supervisor McCowen, do you want to make this next ad hoc meeting open to the public? I don't have any problem with that, whatever.
Okay. Let me, let me...
Supervisor Brown.
Well, do you want to answer John's question?
Well, yeah, I'll speak just to that one point. I, I'm fine with the meetings being open to the public, but I would defer to the wishes of the Brook Trails Community Services District members. And so at their option, I'm happy to go either way.
Okay. Supervisor Brown.
Thank you, Chair Hamburg. And, and I do think it needs to be a process that includes the Brook Trails Township Community Service District. I think that's very important in looking at how we go forward, solve some of the problems that we're having. Because obviously, you know, having that open communication would be great. So I fully support the recommendation, and I'll make a motion that the Brook Trails Ad Hoc Committee meet with representatives of the Brook Trails Township Community Service District to discuss Brook Trails-related issues with a primary focus on lot consolidation strategies, and that the ad hoc return to the board with a report and recommendations on Brook Trails lot consolidation, teeter plan and housing element and the related issues within 60 days.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Supervisor McCowen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, and obviously I support that motion, because that's what came out of the ad hoc as a recommendation. And I personally am not giving up on the issue of the ad valorem taxes. The ad valorem taxes for those vacant lots do in effect constitute a subsidy by the county. But what became clear at the ad hoc meeting was that the, the county cannot effectively de-teeter all of the ad valorem taxes for the Brook Trails lots, because you don't necessarily de-teeter the actual lots, you de-teeter specific districts that, that place assessments on those lots. So it, it would be possible, going through a lot of effort and a lot of challenges with the limited technology we now have... the limited technology we now have, to de-teeter that portion of the taxes that goes to the Brook Trails Community Services District, which now is approximately $17,000. But the greater share of the property taxes attached to those lots go to the school district. And the school district is not eligible for de-teetering. There has to be a certain threshold of defaults. So again, that goes to the idea that the more productive focus will be to look at lot consolidation and lot merger, which really is in Brook Trails' long-term interest also. They now have over 4,000 vacant lots, they have over approximately 1,500 developed lots, they have a specific plan that calls for downsizing to 4,000 lots, with water for only 1,500 at the present time. But they, by their own plan, they do need to get down to 4,000 lots total. So there's at least 1,500 lots that need to be consolidated or merged one way or another. So I note that their Brook Trails General Service Manager, when she appeared before us, she invited us to work with them on lot merger and consolidation as a more productive avenue. So we're happy to take them up on that.
Thank you. Supervisor Brown?
And there was a conversation between Supervisor Pinches and Supervisor McCowen about whether it should be a public meeting or not, and I would very much favor that. I think it's important to the constituents within the Brook Trails community to be able to hear what's said, learn, also perhaps make suggestions. So having it publicly noticed, I think it's the right way to go.
Okay. Supervisor McCowen?
Well, I don't disagree. Again, I think we decided that we would defer to Brook Trails on that.
It's not part of the motion.
Yeah. And also, you know, really, Brook Trails, rather than have our staff go through a lot of motions to try and dig up information, Brook Trails-
May have it.
Has a lot of information on the lots and the status of them, so, you know, we do intend to work closely with them. That's certainly the intention.
Supervisor Pinches?
Mr. Chairman, Denise, General Manager from Brook Trails is here. Maybe this time we can just tell her, no matter-
I was definitely going to call.
Yeah, but whoever gets appointed to be on this ad hoc committee, whether they want to have it public to let Kyle know, and also, any information that may be relevant to these discussions, if Brook Trails could be, you or the members, make sure that some of that information can come to the meeting so we can put it all on the table and see where the lot merger program is and everything.
Okay. Now, I'd like to ask if any member of the public would like to address the board on the motion or items related to this issue. Denise, you're good? Okay.
I would just like to take this opportunity to thank-
Denise, would you just mind giving your name for the record?
Denise Rose, General Manager, Brook Trails Township Community Services District.
Thank you.
I would like to take this opportunity to thank the Board of Supervisors, particularly Supervisors McCowen and Pinches, for giving Brook Trails this opportunity to work with you to further both our futures. So thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public who'd like to address the board on this item? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion before us with a second. All in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. The next item before us is item number 5D, introduction wave reading of an ordinance adding section 2.04.044 to chapter 2.04 of the Mendocino County Code. Training requirements for police officers of the Health and Human Services Agency. And the sponsor of this item is the Health and Human Services Agency. Brian, are you here for this item?
Yeah.
You and John? Okay. Come on up to the mic. You can just take a seat at the table if you'd like.
Yes?
I think so.
Okay. Good morning, board. So we're here today, I've brought our chief, John Martier, here today. So I'm Brian Lowery with the acting director for the Health and Human Services Agency. This is our chief, John Martier. And John can answer any questions that the board may have or make any statements he'd like to in regards to this agenda.
Thank you, Brian. I'd just like to give you a brief summary of what the purpose of this ordinance is. The California Post, which is peace officer standard and training, sets specific guidelines for the hiring of peace officers and the continued training thereof. Health and Human Services currently employs four peace officers. We are not a recognized post-certified agency, however, we've always adhered to Post's recommendations in terms of background investigations and continued training. To become a posted agency, the California Post requires an ordinance be passed. We have a similar ordinance in place regarding our deputy sheriffs and our district attorney investigators. So the purpose of this is to give us parity with those organizations and, you know, continue to enforce our professionalism and our commitment, the county's commitment to the standardized training. And thus, following that will also, I believe, reduce potential liabilities in any of the hiring practices or ongoing training that we try to participate in. And I'd be happy to answer any of your questions regarding this.
Supervisor Pinches?
This brings up something very interesting to me, not necessarily the HHSA agency, but I was always under the impression, actually was told on many occasions, that before we could have an active, say, reserve deputy program in this county, that we had to go through the post-certification and all that to do that. And according to this, that's not true, right?
Yes, sir. That is correct. That is not true. It is my understanding that becoming a posted agency is every agency's option. As far as I know, the City of Los Angeles Police Department is not a California posted agency, so it's not a requirement.
Yeah, I've been told many occasions that it was required, and that really changes the light on that, because if it was required, then there's a considerable cost and time element to create a reserve deputy program. But without that element there, we could have, we had years ago, when I was a kid, it was a very active reserve, we called them deputy, dollar a day, or dollar a year deputy sheriffs, which my dad was one for years. But in the rural areas of Mendocino County, it gives your force a lot of backup, you know, if you have a CADRA, say, of 20 or 30 reserve deputies out there that could be called in emergency or something. So this is a very interesting fact. I hope that our CEO takes notice of this, because it's something that's a new revelation for me. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Supervisor Brown?
Thank you, Chair Hamburg. So you, as an investigator, are you armed?
Yes, ma'am. Myself and my investigators are all armed.
Okay. Certainly, I think the training makes a lot of sense, but I will express my concern, as I did back in, I think it was 2009, about, you are the direct supervisor, is that correct?
Yes, I am.
Okay. So you've been through the training, but with animal control, you know, I was kind of taken back that we have armed individuals within an agency that is supervised by people that maybe do not have this training. And it was really concerning to me. And I recommended, and we did take the action, to move animal control and the officers over to the sheriff's department. But I guess I'm expressing that concern again, because your higher-ups certainly are not individuals that are knowledgeable or well-trained in the same type as the sheriff and supervisors within the sheriff's department. So I guess I'm just kind of going back to where I was in 2009 and the concern I do have.
If I could just expound on that just a tad bit, all welfare investigators are peace officers under the penal code, and we are required to go to the same training and the same standards on hiring practices as our sheriff's personnel and any other law enforcement agency in the state. The current academy is some 28 weeks long. All our people have gone to the regular police academy. We have, we participate in over 24 hours a year of continuing education with regard to the laws, arrest and control techniques, firearms training. We have, we are held to the same standard as every other law enforcement agency in this state, and we do actively participate in that training.
Supervisor Jordy?
Hi, thanks. I agree that the post-training is very helpful. In general, I have a question, so I'm not familiar with your department, I'm the new person here. So what exactly do your four peace officers do, and why are they within social services?
The program, or the Special Investigations Unit, as we're called, is tasked with investigating allegations of fraud in any of the public assistance programs that we administer in social services. So that would be CalWorks, CalFresh, which is the food stamp program, in-home supportive services, and our general assistance program. So my group is an investigative branch. We respond to complaints from the public or internal referrals with allegations of welfare fraud or public assistance fraud being committed. We investigate those crimes, and then we make a determination whether there's a threshold in this county where if an overpayment and overissuance is at a certain level, we make a criminal referral to the district attorney's office requesting prosecution. But that's a very small case. Most of the cases are handled administratively, either through grant adjustment or some sort of repayment program.
So two more questions. So the other, another question is, is 100% of the pay and compensation for the four officers covered by state or federal funds?
It's not 100%. I believe there's a small county matching fund to pay for salaries for, and Mr. Gurkin can probably address those percentages, but I believe it's about 85% is paid through the program cost. Yes.
Okay, then my final question is-
Supervisor, do you want, Doug Gurkin is here, do you want him to address that? Doug? That's what you get for sitting in here. We see you back there, and we're going to use you.
Hello, Doug Gurkin, CFO for the Health and Human Services Agency, can't speak, chair, board members. And the majority of the agency is exactly as he spoke, but in his instance, it's mainly CalWorks and welfare work activities is what he is after, and that is 100% state and federal-funded. So when he works on IHSS, there is some county share, but when it's, when the majority of his job, I don't know what percentage of it is, is 100% covered. So state and federal money.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thanks, Doug. And then one final question would be, with this reclassification, will these employees move to a different, or will there be a pressure at some point for them to move into the public safety pension system, which is more expensive?
We currently are members of the safety pension system. We have been since the inception of that position back in the 70s.
Okay.
Thank you. And I'm not sure if it's Supervisor McCowen or Supervisor Pinches next.
One follow-up for Mr. Gurkin. Given that some of the expenses are reimbursed 100%, then it's overall, there's probably greater than an 85% reimbursement to the county.
Without question. Wait, closer to 100%.
Okay, so close to 100% probably, since the majority of their work is in 100% reimbursable categories. Thank you.
Do you want to go on?
And then I did have some questions for Mr. Matier.
Martier, yes.
Martier, sorry.
No problem.
So all of your investigators are post-certified, at least at the basic level, but the agency is not certified, and that's what we're talking about here is-
Correct.
-allowing for the agency to be post-certified.
Absolutely. That is correct. All of our, all of our people meet the post certification, they come out of the academy, you know, with a basic academy. My current staff all has prior law enforcement experience, either as deputy sheriff's with our county or other, other police agencies. And so we're just, this ordinance just pertains to certifying the agency, stating that we would adhere to what the state post requirements are for training and continuing education, which is what we're doing now in a voluntary sense. This just makes it more professional. This allows us to take advantage of other training opportunities in terms of, they have a special investigators course that Post provides, there's sources for research and other training aids that aren't available to Post agencies. The state would charge us for that if we wanted to participate or use some of their training materials. Once our agency becomes a post-certified agency, all that becomes free, and it's another resource for us to continue our training.
So it sounds like there's probably a minimal cost to the county, to your agency, and probably close to an equal or greater offsetting benefit.
There actually is no cost to the agency to join. The only mandate is this procedural ordinance, that's what Post requires. There could be, in the future, a small cost in terms that the, my investigators are members of the Deputy Sheriff's Association. The deputy sheriffs have an incentive program for different certificate pays. When we were moved to the Deputy Sheriff's Association some seven or eight years ago, I believe that was just an oversight in terms of not including that group in those certificate pay perhaps. But again, that would be, as I know it, a meet and confer item, you know, through negotiations, and that is not the objective of what we're trying to do today. We're just trying to have available more training resources and make sure that we're able to adhere to the standards set forth by Post.
Thank you. And one more to Mr. Gurkin, and you can probably just indicate if this is accurate or not. To the extent there are those additional costs described, those would be reimbursable at the same rate as the other costs, and I'm getting an affirmative, so thank you.
Supervisor Pinches?
Just a comment on this weapons issue and training, you know, just because you're not post-certified doesn't mean, there's a lot of training programs out there with weapons and whatnot that isn't post-certified. For an example, every veteran has a pretty extensive training on weapons, so that makes them, in this arena, makes veterans a primary candidate to be hired for that, so I just wanted to bring that point up. But there are a lot of training programs and good programs out there, but when it comes to weapons trainings, that's not necessarily Post.
Okay. Any further questions on the board? Yes, Mr. Sakowitz.
Thank you, Chair Hamburg. Good morning, Supervisors, County Council, County Chief Executive Officer, John Sakowitz, Yekaya speaking as a private citizen only. I've been concerned since 9/11 about the expansion of law enforcement powers. My question to Mr. Matier is, when someone becomes a recipient of any kind of public assistance, be it TANF or food stamps or what have you, do they give up rights to privacy? Are there any privacy protections? Do you get to see medical records, mental health records? Do you get to see bank records without the permission of the subject? Cell phone records? Do you get to conduct no-knock searches of their home, et cetera? Just have a lot of questions about the powers of this law enforcement unit within HHSA. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Matier?
Thank you for those questions. No, you don't give up your right to privacy. We have, we have due process in this, in this state, in this country with regards to what law enforcement may or may not do, and I, my agency is bound to those same standards and requirements. Generally, when somebody comes in to request public assistance, they must provide proof of their income. They provide that proof through their voluntary giving us their bank information, their bank statements. We do not ask for, in most regards or most programs, medical information. To my knowledge, I'm not a program expert, but the medical portion of- To my knowledge, I'm not a program expert, but the medical portion of that is extremely private, and it's guarded by HIPAA requirements. I have not seen, in my 20 years of experience, seen any medical records or anything like that. The only other way that we would obtain information, and you mentioned cell phones or bank accounts too, is if we had a viable search warrant, which would be signed by a judge of the court authorizing us to do that pursuant to a criminal investigation and probable cause. So we don't actively go looking for welfare fraud. I can tell you that we have some 1,200 open cases of welfare fraud that we're taking a look at. And those are from referrals from members of the community, or they're referrals from inside the program where eligibility worker might have a question that needs to be investigated by one of my members, one of my investigators. I think that answered all your questions. There was a long line of questions there.
Any other comments by the board? Supervisor McCowen?
Mr. Chair, I'll make the recommended motion, which in effect will add a section to the Mendocino County Code that will be titled Training Requirements for Peace Officers of the Health and Human Services Agency.
Is there a second?
Second.
Barely got a second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to introduce and waive the reading of the ordinance. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries unanimously. And we will take a 15-minute break. Thank you.
Thank you.
Be back in session. The next item before us is Agenda Item 6B, Discussion Possible Action Regarding the County of Mendocino Becoming a Signatory to the Russian River Compact. And this item is brought to us by Supervisors Brown and Hamburg. And I'm going to turn this initiation of this presentation over to Supervisor Brown.
Thank you very much, Chair Hamburg. And since we're being asked to sign on a document, this is why this particular agenda item is before us. It's very explanatory about how we became involved. And on the agenda summary, they're asking the different entities that have participated. And I've included in this agenda summary the committee roster for the, it's called the Executive Committee, of those that have participated and will be considering signing on. It's pretty self-explanatory, and I don't think much needs to be said further than that unless supervisors have questions. There is no cost to the county. It's mainly an effort to put all entities, whether they're from government or nonprofits, together in the Russian River watershed. There will be less funds coming for restoration projects and other projects that are very important to all of us in the Russian River watershed. But fewer funds means, you know, fewer projects being done. And if we can get all groups working together, look at the best projects and the importance of those projects, I just feel that this is something we need to do.
Questions of Supervisor Brown. Seeing none, would anyone in the public like to address Supervisor Brown or address the board? And I see Diane Pauley coming up. Thank you, Diane.
Good morning. I'm Diane Pauley, and I want to know what the compact is. You know, in 50 words or less.
It was started by Supervisors Mike McGuire and Efren Carrillo from Sonoma County. And they sent out invitations to other entities, including government, water districts, including Potter Valley irrigation, and many of the nonprofits. I forget how many nonprofits there are in the Russian River watershed, but quite a group of them, plus the RCDs to participate. The funding due to federal government's issues, financial issues, et cetera, same with the state of California, will be far less as we move into the future for different restoration projects. And we are looking at a certain amount coming to the Russian River instead of everyone submitting projects competing against each other. We're hoping, as a group, we can bring those projects forward, have presentations, rank them, as these are the most important, that we look forward to having funded. But all entities are included. When Supervisor Carrillo and McGuire first engaged Supervisor Hamburg and myself, I actually went through the entire list and made sure that all those entities within Mendocino County would be included. And it's just mainly, it's not a directive. It's mainly what we aspire to with different projects, is working together so that we can move forward. And basically, it's what I have said needed to happen for a very long time, is instead of all these entities going separate ways, that we work together as a group.
So we're trying to reduce redundancy. And very briefly, I got to tell you, I saw a preview of this when Rudy Light sued the state. Can you believe anybody can sue the state? Okay. Regarding the frostwater protection of the Russian River. The lobby of the courthouse was filled with Russian River farmers, all, many from Sonoma County. I call them the Friends of Ben, Ben Davis. And Janet Pauley and I had to get them together a little bit and lecture them. We said, okay, guys, now, this is not the Board of Supervisors. This is a court of law. And if that bailiff doesn't like the way you roll your eyes... So yes, good luck to us.
Yeah.
And I'd like to give you the agenda.
Supervisor Brown, it seems to me that this compact kind of is growing out of the biological opinion. Isn't that true?
That is true.
And the work that's being done in the Russian River watershed with a lot of attention now being paid to the Russian River watershed by the federal government? In fact, we learned recently that it's one of two or three watersheds in the country that is getting the most attention and the most funding. And I attended a meeting, was it Mono Rio or Freestone? One of those little communities down there. And many of the people who were on this executive committee roster were either there or were represented. Supervisor McGuire and Carrillo were there. We had representation from the farming community, people who had worked with the Resource Conservation District folks, and had worked with Laura Marcus. And it was really, it was a very encouraging event for me in the sense that you had, you know, farmers who are, you know, just out there trying to make a living, having really positive things to say about some of these interventions that are being made to, again, make the Russian River flourish. I think it was Supervisor Zane at the meeting that I attended where you're, what was that meeting, Supervisor?
The Public Policy Facilitating Committee.
The Public Policy Committee. That meeting occurred just before, I think, the first meeting of this Russian River Compact group. And I thought Supervisor Zane spoke very movingly about the responsibility that we humans have to restore this watershed to something approaching, you know, the incredible resource that it was, you know, 100 years ago. So I think there's a lot of very strong energy and even money that's going into this project of restoring the Russian.
Correct. And even speaking besides the biological opinion, there's many separate efforts that have been undertaken as the independent science review panel on the frost issue. So there's so much going on. Many of us do not know what the other entities are doing or what they're trying to accomplish. And we have our Departments of Transportation also looking at roads and water runoff. So, you know, I see it as a win-win situation in bringing everyone to the table, looking at all the projects. If there's a certain amount of money coming for the Russian River itself, let's review what is being proposed and what are the best projects to go forward and support those.
Okay. Supervisor McCowen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll move approval of the recommended action.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Supervisor Pinchess.
Just a comment. After the Fourth of July, there's not much water in the Russian River from what is for the Eagle River water.
Especially years like this.
Yes.
Okay, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, moving on to Item 5A, the CEO's report. Ms. Angelo.
Hi. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. The board should all have hard copies of my CEO report. There might be some in the back. If not, you could get them in the executive office. And the CEO report is posted to the website for the public. To begin with, just a brief update on our successor redevelopment agency. The executive office staff continues to work with the State Department of Finance to wrap up the business of the agency. And on March 29th, the county successor redevelopment agency was granted a finding of completion from the state. So basically, that means that we've met all of our financial obligations under code. The Oversight Board has approved a long-range property management plan that was submitted to the state on April 1. And if the plan is approved, then we will be authorized to sell the remaining agency asset, which is a very small parcel at $4,000. And then once that occurs, then we'll be one step closer to recommending disbanding the committee. So we're moving along. I think it's been a lengthy process, and I appreciate all the work of staff and those involved in this. We've essentially had very, very few bumps in the road on our RDA. Of course, we had a small RDA to start with, but I think that we're progressing nicely. Human Resources Wellness Incentives, I think our wellness program within the county system is really one of our better programs. It's a best practice. It's a model. We probably don't talk enough about it. And as we sometimes don't showcase all of the good work that's being done by our county staff. So just a little blurb here about the wellness incentive program. We have been working with Ukiah Valley Medical Center. We've also been working with Howard Memorial and the Coast Hospital, are working on wellness program. And we're doing a spring campaign this year called our Biggest Loser Challenge. And this is based on the popular TV show, the 2013 Biggest Loser Challenge is a 12-week campaign. It will start on May 6th, and it allows participates to create a Biggest Loser team for the chance to win one of three team-based prizes. And it's based, of course, on the greatest percentage of weight loss. In addition to this campaign, Healthy Roads will provide wellness services in conjunction with the county's current wellness program. So we're pleased to offer this to our staff. The second phase of the 2012-13 Wellness Incentive Program will conclude on May 15th, and that has been with good participation among our county employees. So we're really pleased with the wellness program and the incentive program, which for the purpose of the public is, we offer incentives to our staff to actually go through with all of their preventive health care. And for the purposes, of course, we know that prevention today will lead to a better quality of life later on. So we're really pleased, and I think, you know, this is a program, and we're one of the few counties in the state, I think, that offers such a great program to our employees. So we're very pleased. Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Jordy has a question.
Also, I'm not really questioning, just encouraging my colleagues to join the Biggest Loser campaign. We have a team signed up in the CEO's office.
Of course, of course, we do.
And also to help kick it off, I bought, for my, a Sony used Jacklone juicer, as I brought into the break room.
You put that juicer, do you put that juicer right next to those brownies on the table?
Yeah, that's the brownies and the pie.
I'll take the brownies.
Well, thank you.
I won't participate.
You might be the winner if you did.
Well, good. Okay.
Ms. Angelo, go on.
Glad to hear we're all moving forward. Great.
As usual.
The Indian Gaming Special Distribution Fund, the Indian Gaming Local Community Benefit Committee met on April 16th and awarded approximately $140,000 in funds to eight local jurisdictions. And I believe there may be, I don't know if one of the supervisors is reporting out on this, so I'll leave it at that, except I did say it's $140,000 in funds. And that really is used for law enforcement and for infrastructure, so we'll leave it at that. And then our feasibility study for ambulance service, our exclusive operating area, this has really received a lot of attention, not only by this board, but by the public. We've had great participation in all areas of the county. County staff and consultants concluded a series of six community meetings that were held throughout the county during the week of April 15th. Constructive input was received from the community members and from our emergency medical services providers, and those results will be incorporated into the consultant report. It is still anticipated that this report will be completed mid-May and will be brought to the board. I still think this is a very ambitious timeline. I question the timeline, but this is still what we're hearing from our consultants, so...
This might be a good time, since you bring it up, for a little bit of input from board members. Supervisor Brown?
Thank you, Chair Hamburg. And Ms. Angelo, the report is due back, but certainly, you know, there's no, at least this was said during the presentations, community presentations, but there's no deadline for the discussion of the board or further discussion with the community on this particular issue.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Supervisor Brown, that's correct. Our deadline is self-imposed to get the report with all of the community input back to this board, but there is no hard timeline on any action or non-action that this board will take. And I'm assuming that when the report comes back to the board, that there will be community input on that day as well.
I think that's a good bet. But one question I have. Are we under any kind of a timeline with respect to the LMSA classification? Because we do have this contract with Coastal Valleys. And I know that contract comes up, I think, is it annually or biannually?
It's annually.
Annually. So don't we want to move this along? Because couldn't that contract be affected by what we finally decide?
The, there's no intent on, within the exclusive operating area feasibility study, to change the LMSA. You know, we've talked about, actually, at one point, and within our, and that's for the purposes of the public, that's basically our local EMS authority. We have been in partnership with Sonoma County and Napa County for many years. Napa County recently dropped out, and now that partnership is Sonoma County and Mendocino County, and it's still called Coastal Valleys. And again, thank you for indulging me, but I want to make sure the public understands what we're talking about. What we have talked about, as far as the LMSA, is possibly adding other counties to the LMSA. And if we do, we think that we could be a stronger entity. And we have talked about that, but that's not part of the process with the EOA. And whatever we do with the EOA, we're still anticipating that we will be in this partnership with Coastal Valleys and Sonoma County. Now, whether that would change the actual contract statement of work, it certainly could based on the EOA. But I think that, really in response to your question, Mr. Chair... But I think that, really in response to your question, Mr. Chair, I realize that the public has come out in droves on this process. And probably, we knew that there would be interest, and there's interest on both sides. I mean, there are a lot of members of the public and a lot of our EMS providers that think the EOA is really the way to go. So, it really is very mixed. But, I think with this, that what's important, and I know what's important to this board, is that we vet the whole process and make sure that you hear from the public. And if that means delaying any steps that we're thinking of taking, whether it's with Coastal Valleys or anyone else, I think we're fine with that.
Well, in that regard, I think, this came up, the two meetings I attended in Boonville and Wallala, that I think the public would like to see the Fitch draft prior to it coming before the board, for the board to make a decision on whether to move forward with that. So, it shouldn't just be, you know, we get this draft, and then immediately it's on the agenda. I understand the draft is due by May 15th, but the board doesn't need to make a decision at any particular point, particularly with the LMSA consideration you just raised.
Well, certainly, the board directs that. And if I take that as direction from this board, that's what we'll do. I don't see a problem with that. Again, you know, we have consultants. They've put themselves on a tight timeframe, a lot of that being direction from county staff. But we know that, you know, what we really want is a thorough process. So, we certainly could have that draft go back out, if you'd like.
And one thing that did become clear at the meetings was that, you know, not casting any aspersions on Fitch, but there were some key players who were not included in the initial fact-finding exercise that Fitch went through. So, you know, that's concerning. Those, you know, some of those people who were missed the first time around really need to be talked with. And Supervisor Brown, and then Supervisor Jody.
Thank you. Ms. Angelo, on the LMSA, with Napa dropping out, is that going to possibly increase our costs with Coastal Valleys, our participation?
Napa dropped out some time ago, and...
I think it's been a year.
Yeah. And the, the Napa leaving did not impact our costs. What's impacted our costs really is that, you know, honestly, Sonoma County has picked up the lion's share of the cost for years. When I came on to this county in 2007, and we began discussions, it was very clear that Sonoma County was really covering a lot of costs in general for all three counties.
And the other question I have, when there's three counties together, do you not receive a higher level of funding? So, you know, previous to Coastal Valleys coming back, I think that the board has to look at perhaps maybe some other options.
Well, you know, honestly, in my experience with emergency medical services, and my experience goes back to my days in San Diego County, I think that this county would be hard-pressed to be their own EMS authority. One of the main reasons we're doing the exclusive operating area is because we have a very fragile EMS system. Some of the strength that we have in our EMS system is because we are aligned with Sonoma County and Coastal Valleys. We've had an EMS coordinator, we had one for many years, we no longer have that. We're, in some ways, very dependent on our contractor of Coastal Valleys. So, I'm not certain either, there could be a change in the model. I don't think it would be so significant that we would have to look at something different. Last comment on that is that the EMS authority really comes from the state, and the state determines those counties and those agencies. I believe at one time, there were seven agencies in the state. I don't know if we still have seven agencies. And basically, as they do with a lot of rural counties, they'll group those rural counties together. I think that, really, for us, and this is my best professional opinion, nothing else, is that, you know, we would gain strength by having one or two other counties participate in our LMSA. But to try to go out on our own, I think would be extremely difficult.
Well, actually, Lake used to be with us. And now, they're, I believe, with a group made up of Trinity, Humboldt, and Del Nord?
Right. It's NorCal. That's right.
NorCal.
And we're very interested in talking with Lake County. And as a matter of fact, I've talked with my counterpart, my CIO counterpart, in Lake County. The issue with the configuration, of course, is it's all based on state approval. And so, there would, we'd really have to work with the state. But I think to bring in Lake County, it would just be a natural fit. We know that. And it would just be working with the state to do that. And of course, Lake County would have to want to participate in our LMSA rather than the one they're in. They have, there is no problem with the NorCal LMSA, and they provide excellent services. Well, I mean, anybody who provides EMS services in these rural communities where you have remote and rustic areas, you know, they're working really hard to provide those services countywide.
Supervisor Jody.
So, I just wanted to, I agree with the suggestion by Chair Hamburg, and I think that'd be really helpful if the board could get a copy of the draft report in mid-May, when it's published.
In mid-May, if we could get a copy of the report well in advance of it going to the board meeting, because I have, I've already had contact from the fire chief in Fort Bragg, Steve Orsi, who attended the meeting. I wasn't able to attend the meeting in Fort Bragg, but he gave me some insightful feedback about what was said there. And I'd like to be able to, you know, discuss the plan, the draft plan with him and others in Fort Bragg before it ever goes back to the board.
That's absolutely fine, and I will certainly talk with staff and assure that when we have a draft report, that that draft report will come to this board first, and then it will be disseminated to our community partners. And if I can make one more comment on this.
Does the rest of the board concur with that? Because that isn't necessarily the way we always handle things. I mean, sometimes we have a report, comes to the board for an up or down, or, you know, we can discuss it and put it back out. But I think because of the level of public interest in this, it would really behoove us to be as open as possible.
We need to be, yes.
So, is that okay with everybody? That that's the way we do it? Okay, very good. Were you?
Thank you. Just last comment on that. Again, we know we have a fragile system. The system is really based on a lot of our volunteer agencies. The goal is to support, to prop up those agencies, not to eliminate any of those agencies. But the fact is that if any of those volunteer agencies are no longer providing these services, we are responsible. We have to have those services. So, really, for the 90,000 people that live in this county, we have to figure out how we can support those services and those volunteer agencies that are out there doing the work that we need them to do, so.
I just want to make one more comment. The use of the term of art, which is exclusive operating area, has created a lot of misunderstanding in the public. Because when people see that, they think somebody's going to come in from the outside, and they're going to take over all these ambulance services. And even though that's not something we ever said, just the terminology is very misleading. For example, people don't understand that you can have more than one exclusive operating area in a county. People don't understand that there can be carve-outs, that, you know, if Coast Life Support District is doing wonderfully, and they don't want to participate, you know, they can be their own, you know, their own little carve-out. Now, it's been pointed out to me by some of the Coastal Valley people that although that may seem very attractive at first glance, there may be problems with that. Because one of the things that comes with not being an exclusive operating area is that anybody can move into your territory and try to cherry-pick your best accounts. In fact, that's what we're seeing in Ukiah with this competition between the two ambulance services, who are both going for the, what do they call them? The IFSs, the transfers of patients from one...
Hospital transfers.
Place to another, which are very lucrative. And so, you know, we've got, you know, kind of these two agencies chasing after each other to, you know, to rake in whatever there is to rake in. So, anyway, there's a lot of misunderstanding out there. I think some of it is our fault for not, maybe not being out there ahead of this. I know when I went to the meetings last week, I was kind of taken aback by the level of, well, concern by the public. I do want to publicly commend Chief Colin Wilson of the Anderson Valley Fire Department and Fire District for kind of speaking up in favor of the county's efforts in a fairly hostile crowd of people who are part of the ambulance service. I mean, he actually pointed out what our CEO did, which is that, finally, this comes down to county responsibility to make sure there's a base level of service throughout the county. And I think what Chief Wilson said that night was that he thinks the county would be remiss to not be launching the kind of effort that we are to make sure that ambulance service continues in the county. But anyway, there's a huge amount of concern out there, and I just think we have to move through this very deliberately and very transparently. Thank you. Oh, excuse me, Supervisor McCowen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'd just like to add on to the chair's comments that it was emphasized at the meeting I attended, and I'm sure all the others, that this is still very much something that's in the fact-finding process, and information is being gathered. But also, because there is no new infusion of resources that's going to come out of this process, for most residents in the rural areas, there's probably going to be no discernible change. The people that are providing the emergency services now are going to be the people providing them into the future. And it, you know, it is very much a patchwork system that does rely very heavily on community volunteers. Frankly, I don't think anyone familiar with the process really sees that changing in some of the more urban areas where there's more call for ambulance services. Depending on what information is presented, what recommendations are made, what direction the board chooses to go, there could be change. But for those folks in the outlying areas worried about their local ambulance service, keep supporting your local ambulance service, because that's who you're going to have helping you and responding to your emergencies for the future. I don't think anyone sees a change in that.
Thank you, Supervisor. Ms. Angelo.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Great. It's good to see the interest in this, because it's really critical. Okay, regarding our budget, the third quarter budget report, reporting materials have been distributed to the departments, and they're due back to the executive office on April 25th. And the third quarter budget update report is scheduled to go before this board on May 14th. We have done budget conferences over the past week or so with individual departments, and the budget conferences will be wrapped up on Wednesday, April 24th. And that information will help us as we prepare a draft budget to bring to this board in June. I think some good news here regarding our 2013-14 tax revenue anticipation notes. As this board knows, and the public knows, we borrow every year. We do what's called trans borrowing, which basically is short-term borrowing to get us through the year. And we do that because we usually don't have enough money for 365 days a year to cover our costs. So, we do the trans borrowing, and it floats us through the year, and we're able to pay back. And it's not a long-term loan. The county's debt committee convened on April 16th this year to discuss our trans borrowing again for 2013-14. And the committee that we have, just as a reminder to this board and the public, is my office, our Assistant CEO Kyle Knopp, our Treasurer-Tax Collector Sherry Schatmeyer, our Auditor Meredith Ford, and our Assistant Auditor Lloyd Weir. We did a phone conference with our Financial Advisor KNN, that's still on board with us. And after a thorough review of our historical and prospective cash flows, the committee and the county's financial advisor have determined that a trans issuance will not be necessary for 2013-14. I'm very pleased to report that to the board. The executive office is therefore canceling the annual process. Past spending expenses and narrowing county reserves, internal debt resulted in that era where trans borrowing became a regular staple of the county finance. Every year, we had to borrow. But as a result of this board's strong commitment to moving forward and building a general reserve level to national standards, your overall commitment to combating the debt at all levels, our TEATER program, our capital improvements, and other corrective actions, we have experienced an improved financial condition that has positively affected our cash flow. And so, with that, along with our ratings change from Fitch from stable to positive, it looks pretty good this year. We will not have to apply for our temporary funding for 2013-14. And again, I'm very pleased to report that. It was the good work of a lot of different efforts to get us there, and particularly the direction of this board, so thank you for that. Finally, Chief...
Can you hold on just one second?
Sure.
I think we have a few pens up here. Supervisor Pinches.
Carmel, you're very modest in this. To me, this is huge news. We should have a major county party over this issue. First of all, it's going to save us over $200,000 in general fund money by not doing this process. And it takes a lot of staff work, a lot of department heads' work to put this all together. And this is the first time, I don't know how many years, that the county hasn't had to do this borrowing. I mean, it's been probably decades that this hasn't been done. So, this is, this is not just good news. Besides it being good news, it's huge news. And I'd like to see a, not that they'll probably print it, but it should go out as a press release, because this is, you know, it's basically, when you do the trans borrowing, it's taken $200,000 and putting into keeping it. We can internal operate now. We've got a good enough cash flow. But this, to me, watching the finances in this county for a couple of decades, this is a huge step forward. It is going to be good for everybody, but it's, I feel like jumping up on this counter about this.
Well, go right ahead. I'd like to watch.
Part of the wellness program.
Supervisor Brown, and then Supervisor McCowen.
Thank you. Yes, to me, this is unbelievable, and I'm really happy about it. I believe it was in 2010 that we were one of a couple, maybe three or four, counties within the state, that maybe we weren't going to get the money, and we needed it. We had a problem in finding a lender because of the shape that we were in. And Carmel, I really appreciate your committee, all your work, all their work. And yes, it hasn't been easy being on the Board of Supervisors in the last four and a half years, when you can't do a lot of things within a county, because you just don't have the financial ability. And I do agree with Supervisor Pinches. People may not truly understand how big of a deal this is, but certainly, this board does, and the auditor, the treasurer, all the people that participate, that work in county government with this trans borrowing. But I just remember back going, oh, my gosh, what if we don't find a lender? And I think we were three or four counties in the state at the time that had a real problem. And I think it was CSAC that worked with us and got us a lender. So, to me, it's wonderful news. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor McCowen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, this is tremendous news, and it certainly does warrant a press release, I believe. And to go from, as Supervisor Brown says, two, three years ago, we were at risk of not being able to borrow the necessary funds. And now, due to the leadership of the executive office and the prudent financial decisions of the board, we're in a position where we don't need to borrow the funds at all. But in terms of being overly modest, I think we should highlight Supervisor Pinches, who has been a leader in really focusing on this issue and helping encourage staff to really rethink the necessity of doing this trans borrowing. And I think we're seeing the payoff for those efforts today. But I know Supervisor Pinches has been instrumental in focusing attention on this issue and the savings to the county. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'm not so sure I deserve all of that, but thank you.
I'll take it anyway.
It's part of the wellness program.
Okay, any other comments? Thank you. Ms. Angelo.
I think that, other than saying that Supervisor Pinches studies the budget book more than anybody I know, he has been instrumental. Last comment, our third quarter budget report, as I mentioned, is Tuesday, May 14th, and I think that's it for my report. And, Mr. Chair, there is no legislative report today, which is item 5B.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to the... Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to the DOT report. Oh, I'm sorry. Did you want to comment on the CEO's report? Okay, Mr. Sakowitz.
Just very quickly, I didn't plan on being up here twice in one day. Thank you, John Sakowitz. Yucaya speaking as a private citizen only. Yes, I want to congratulate this board and the CEO's office on this major achievement. I've been following board business for many years now, and not doing short-term borrowing through tax revenue anticipation notes or a certificate of participation securities goes back as far as I can remember. And as Supervisor Pinches points out, there's no free lunch, whether it's 25 basis points or 50 basis points. It boils down to about $200,000 a year that the county is saving. I want to point out also that this is a major achievement insofar as this county did not achieve this under the auspices of some joint powers authority. A lot of trans borrowing and cops borrowing is done through a joint powers authority, and Mendocino County flew solo in this effort. Finally, we mentioned who needs to be congratulated on this, certainly the board, certainly CEO's office, Treasurer's office, and auditor, but also the employees of Mendocino County. It's through the contraction of our workforce from about 1,300 employees to the present 1,000 employees, more or less, through attrition and retirement and a few layoffs, and the increase in productivity and the salary cuts of 10% for the remaining 1,000 employees, that we were able to achieve this surplus, which put us in a position where we didn't have to do the short-term borrowing. So I want to acknowledge the employees of Mendocino County as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 5E, the Director of Transportation report. Is there any, yeah, we have a motion to accept the report.
Second.
And we have a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, say nay. Then the report is accepted. And we do have an 11:30 timed item, but maybe we can get a Supervisor report in beforehand. Anyone want to take about three minutes?
Sure.
Carrie, thank you. Supervisor Brown.
Thank you very much. I want to report on the Pinoleville Ad Hoc Committee, having to do with the agreement with the county to open a casino. We will, we do have a final document, and it will be coming forward at the very next meeting. I'd like to thank Supervisor McCowen for all his work. And it's been ongoing for a while, but we're finally, we have a final document. Also, the all-boards meeting for Inland Water and Power Commission is scheduled for May 9th at 6 o'clock. It'll be at Yucaya Valley Conference Center. And I very much like to have my colleagues join me. I have talked to the clerk about the proper posting to meet Brown Act timelines. I also attended Policy Council on Children and Youth. The meeting mainly consisted of continued work on the three-year plan. And truancy in our schools is a huge focus right now. Children that get set in certain ways at a young age, continue, if they are truant in school, continue that pattern throughout their life. And certainly, it is a focus that I think we have to take seriously due to the money loss in our schools. And everyone sent their congratulations to Supervisor Pinches for convening a meeting on truancy within his district, I believe it was Leightonville School District. And that led to the Policy Council on Children and Youth submitting a request to Mendocino County Office of Education, so that every supervisor can receive a report on the schools within their district and how truancy certainly hurts the school districts themselves. Coming this Saturday on April 27th, there is a program going on. I know there's a lot going on on the 27th, but it's a World of Music with Enrique Henni and other special guests, and it'll be at Mendocino College. And it's a fundraiser for the Children's Action Committee, and there's many other groups that, like CASA, let's see, there'd be CASA, Arbor on the Main, and Nuasra CASA, that'll be beneficiaries of this. They're looking for heroes. Heroes make $100 contribution to the program. And the tickets are available at the Mendocino Book Company, and it's $20 for adults and $10 for children. So I hope you consider attending. Also, Area Agency on Aging will hold their public hearing on Thursday. That is the PSA 26 for Lake of Mendocino County, and it is the update of the area plan, and it'll be at the Highland Senior Center in Clear Lake, beginning at 9:00 a.m. They're also going to be looking at, excuse me, perhaps holding a special meeting in May. And this is due to our provider contracts and federal cuts and other, you know, cuts that are coming, perhaps maybe at a state level. And it would cause us to have to relook at our contracts, make amendments to them, and possibly change them, as well as our contract with the California Department of Aging. I was happy to learn that we do have lots going on in all our communities. And in Potter Valley, the Youth and Community Center is going to hold a Positive Parenting Group. And it will meet once a week for a number of weeks. And they have been holding these throughout the county, and I think it's a wonderful thing. I don't remember them when I was a young parent, and I wish they would have had them, because I think it's really important. I participated on the Human CSAC, California State Association of Counties, Health and Human Services PoliC Committee Conference Call. And this one had to do with all the changes with the Healthcare Act. And this mainly focused on legislation that is now going through Sacramento, both the Assembly and the Senate. If you'd like more information, I can share the information on those bills with you. Thank you.
Supervisor Jordy.
Well, let's see. Last week, week four last night, it was the day after our last Supervisor meeting, I believe. I had the chance to, I was in contact by people from Whale Gulch, which is the very northern part of our county. You have to go into Humboldt County first to get to Whale Gulch. And so the committee members and I had organized a meeting where State Parks and someone from Mendocino County Department of Transportation, as it turned out, it was Kent Stanley, who was able to go with me up there, to look at the county road that enters into Sincione State Park. And the southern half of it, which is maintained by State Parks, had washed out last winter. So what the committee members were concerned about was the status of that road that had washed out. And thankfully, the two representatives from State Parks told the whole group that they are in the process of doing an environmental clearance, mitigated negative deck, which they expect will be completed fairly soon, and that they will then be looking for funding, and they expect that they would be able to find the funding to realign the road. So that's a good news project, and it won't require county funds, as far as I understand. And so-
Great.
That's good. Also, on our way to that portion, the portion that's maintained by the county, there had been some storm damage during this last winter. And County Department Transportation staff had repaired the minor washouts and a tree that had fallen over. And actually, just a couple days before that event, they had cut down the tree and cleared the road. So Sincione Wilderness State Park is definitely accessible to the parking lot area. And we're expecting that they'll be able to repair the, State Parks will repair the road sometime in the next 12 to 18 months. And I have a couple more items, but I think we have a group here. Let's go right into that.
Okay, thank you very much. We do have an 11:30 timed item. Item 6C, informational presentation to the Board of Supervisors on the Child Abuse Prevention Programs provided by Mendocino County's Children's Action Committee, followed by luncheon in the foyer. And this is brought by Supervisors Brown and Hamburg. And Supervisor Brown, do you want to lead off?
Certainly. Thank you very much, Chair Hamburg. Before us, we have many of the members of the Children's Action Committee. And I believe this month, not believe it, I know it, is Child Abuse Prevention Month. We did celebrate a proclamation on that at the beginning of the month. But today, we have our Children's Action Group. There'll be a number of speakers. We're going to have a great presentation. And then at some point, as we finish with the presentation, for all those gathered here and doing the presentation, I would like to read portions of our resolution that the Board of Supervisors passed proclaiming 2013 as the Year of the Child. So why don't we go forward and start the presentation? Is that okay?
Yes. Brandon Merritt is here from the CEO's office. And Brandon, are you going to run the projector here?
Yeah, I'm going to introduce first up Carolyn Smith. And she is the Vista Coordinator of the Children's Action Committee, which is a standing committee of PCCY, the Policy Council on Children and Youth, which is your Board of Supervisors-appointed Policy Council on Children and Youth. So she will be here today, kind of coordinating the presentation. And so I will hand it off to her.
Hello. As he said, my name is Carolyn Smith, and I'm in AmeriCor VISC, working with the Children's Action Committee. Today, we are here to give you information in support of child abuse prevention in Mendocino County. Child abuse prevention is everyone's business. We can each do something to make a difference in every child's life. Thank you. And next, you will hear from Ms. Camille.
Good morning, Camille Schrader, Children's Action Committee. Since we were met here a year ago, at least five innocent children have become either very sick or lost their lives. Five Mendocino County children. One was repeatedly hit by his father. Another died at the hands of a relative in charge of caring for him. And a toddler was so intoxicated with alcohol and methamphetamines that his grandmother could smell it in his vomit. These are the most vulnerable of us all. As much as each of us want to, as much as we do, as much as we care, as much as we hope for, our community did not protect these children. This is not about our Child Protective Services. This is not about our law enforcement. This is not about our ER docs. This is about us. It's about connections. It's about awareness. It's about outreach, engagement, resources, interventions, services, and support in ways that prevent these tragedies from ever happening again. It's up to all of us, each of us, individually and collectively, to keep our children safe, healthy, and thriving. It's you. It's me. It's the guy in line at the bank. Now I will introduce Sharon Hildebrand.
Hi, my name is Sharon Hildebrand. I am your Chair for your Policy Council on Children and Youth, which is the county's board-appointed Child Abuse Prevention Council. I'm also a member of CAC, Children's Action Committee, which is a standing committee of your Policy Council on Children and Youth. The brain's like a house, and it is constantly under construction, with the two heavy periods being zero to five. And we all have figured out that adolescence, which we all blamed it on puberty and those hormones, that is another significant period when brain development is happening. So early experiences literally shape how the brain gets built. And a strong foundation in the early years, when these children are growing up, increases the probability of positive outcomes. A weak foundation increases the odds of later difficulties. Go ahead with the next one. We have what's called toxic stressors in our environment. And chronic stressful conditions such as extreme poverty, abuse and neglect, and other things that can disrupt the architecture of the developing brain play a big part in how our children grow up and can give back to our communities in later life. So our big message today is it does take all of us. In addition, it takes a community, supporting our children, supporting our families in positive ways, even if they come from these toxic stressful conditions in their homes. School is a very big example. If we can provide a positive environment in our school environment, that for many children is eight hours a day of positive influences. And we want to make sure and support that as a community. So what are some of these toxic stressors? You know what? We have a very high poverty rate in this northern corridor. You know, we have lack of healthcare by just virtue of being in a rural health environment. Family violence plays an extremely important role in the development of a child's brain. And it certainly doesn't happen just when that child are young children, zero to five. It can absolutely occur later on, when these children's brains are still developing. We have underemployment. We have homelessness. It's significant in this area. Limited transportation, that's a big one in rural areas. These are all toxic stressors in our community. And what this means is we need to invest in the kinds of programs that prevent child neglect and abuse. Foster care, clinical treatment, and other professional interventions are much more costly and produce less desirable outcomes than the nurturing, protective relationships, and appropriate experiences earlier in life. And for the sake of this presentation, and being that we are a Child Abuse Prevention Council, you know what? We're talking about our kids zero to 21. I know that 18 is a usual cutoff nowadays, but how many of our own children that are in more stable family relationships are not coming home when they are 18, 19, 20, and 21, and needing that family support? We have many families out there that children are really on their own and doing a lot of the parenting from 14 on. Next slide. So one of the significant things that impact how our children grow up and how we as adults can give back to our communities are what's called adverse childhood experiences. And what we're finding with these stressors is they all support problematic decline in our later years. So if we as a community can certainly help to lessen these adverse childhood experiences, it would better a more productive person later on in life. So for example, there are what's called an ACEs study. And the ACEs study is a huge nationwide study that was originated by a physician who used a population of Kaiser. Kaiser, of course, is our largest HMO in the country. And what he did was is he basically sent out 10 questions, and he asked them to give themselves scores. He then followed those 10 questions and followed those people, depending on if they answered yes to these questions, the higher the score, the greater the exposure, and therefore, the greater the risk of negative consequences. He followed them down the line, and he found that these people were experiencing much more significant chronic health problems down the line, including increases in cancer, increases in COPD, increase in heart attacks, and increase in significant things that were limiting their being able to give back as productive members of society. So it then holds true that if we can certainly lessen or prevent these negative aspects from happening earlier in the lives of these children, we can certainly bring to you a more productive adult that brings back to our community. I did, I won't go over these questions, but I'd love for you to have them personally. It's nothing that you have to hand in. Maybe Brandon could hand them to you. Next question. I would now like to introduce to you Gina Connor. Gina Connor is your new Deputy Director of Child Protective Services, Child Welfare Services. You may know it as many things, Health and Human Services in Mendocino County.
Hello. So it takes all of us. Mendocino County's future prosperity depends on our ability to produce strong, caring children who can lead tomorrow's communities. And we're talking about the near future. Before we know it, today's children will be our teachers, doctors, factory workers, technology experts, and our caregivers as we age. If they grow into healthy, contributing adults, our communities and economies will thrive. If we expect solid outputs, we have to invest in solid inputs. Some important statistics from- Some important statistics from Mendocino County Child Welfare Services from 2012. We responded in person to 1,746 referrals last year out of a total of 2,959 referrals received. And this resulted in an average monthly caseload of about 341 cases, which include kids at home with their parents, children in out-of-home care who are in reunification, children in permanency placement, and children who are non-minor dependents who are age 18 and over. There are future costs associated with child maltreatment that cross a variety of systems. The average lifetime cost per victim of non-fatal child maltreatment is $216,311. So as you can see, there is a high lifetime cost. And if you multiply that by each child in the child welfare system, this is an expensive cost to our community. In 2011, the rate of substantiated cases of child abuse and neglect for California was 9.1 per 1,000 children. However, in Mendocino County, it was 19.1 per 1,000 children, which is consistent with the higher rate for the whole northern region of children in care. We believe this is because we care in Mendocino County, and we are concerned about our kids. When we get a call, we are more likely to go out and investigate and check out what's happening and how we can help. Some current practices that we are utilizing in Mendocino County Child Protective Services are formal supervision, which is providing increased monitoring and intensive home-based services to families to help reduce the need for foster care and court intervention when possible. The implementation of KDA services, which is the result of a class action lawsuit against the state of California, to bring together mental health and child welfare services to provide coordinated and intensive home-based services to children who are in the child welfare system, who have mental health needs, and their families to help maintain them in the home when possible. The use of structured decision-making tools to help identify high-risk families and help guide decisions regarding child safety. And lastly, the implementation of safety organized practices to help zero in on the harm and danger to children and to bring together the child, their family, extended family, and community to help achieve the safety for the child. And next is Willow Anderson.
Willow Anderson with the Children's Action Committee. So fortunately, we do live in a county that values happy, healthy children. That's the plus of this. We do this through programs that foster an open and educational climate focusing on the family as a whole, increasing natural and community supports. We do this with programs such as Wraparound, a Raise and Shine program, PCIT, our Family Resource Centers, after-school programs, and Early Head Start. So these programs have decreased the isolation and increases resources to support our children and their families. But what we've done so far is not enough. Our community has failed those five children we mentioned earlier, but there's more that we can do. Combining child and parent-centered strategies, we can focus on prevention and early intervention. These are the five protective factors that we've been using for the last couple of years. So 100 years ago, every child born had at least four adults in their life, and that was their supportive network. And today, the ratio is less than one adult per child. And so that's why it's so important that we invest in our children and our families to provide networks of support. And with a community that focuses on prevention and early intervention, we're creating a safe environment for our children and a sustainable support system for our families. We can invest wisely in our children and families, so the next generation will pay it forward through a lifetime of productivity and responsible citizenship. And next is Ann Mulgarde.
Thank you, Willow. Ann Mulgarde with First Five and the Children's Action Committee. So I know that usually we come in and we're a little cheerier than we are today. And I think we've just hit our limit of cheeriness. This many children dying or being seriously injured is unacceptable. The good news is that I know it's just as unacceptable to you as it is to me. I don't think that you're callous or anything, but I think this is a moment where we can come together and say, we need to change the paradigm of how we're working with children because we can't have another year like this. So what we're asking you to do today is to think big, to set new policy, to become more engaged in children's issues, so that your team at Health and Human Services and your community partners understand what your priorities are, know that you have our back, and know that you're looking for as many resources and as many smart ways of doing business as we can find. We know that the county is recovering slowly from some very difficult budget years and from some very serious pension debt. We all understand that. But we also understand that when we prioritize together, we're going to come up with better solutions than if we simply let you all panic about your pension difficulties and your debt, because it really is ours as well, regardless of whether or not we're county employees. And I think that sometimes, when you're at that much financial risk, I know that I panic sometimes when I'm at financial risk. And I want to say, let's move beyond the concern and the panic and look to partners to help. We don't want to blame you. We want to work with you. There's plenty of blame to go around. We have it. First Five has it. Ann Mulgarde has it. But all we can do now is say, we're going to protect those next five children. We're asking for your leadership so that policy drives practice and policy drives financial decisions. Right now, it's a little bit different than it has been before, not just because we've had so many childhood injuries, but also because of 2011 realignment. The state has now said, fine, it's your problem. For better or for worse, that's the situation we're in. And we just want to make sure that we're taking all advantage that we can of this flexibility to leverage resources and people power to protect our most vulnerable, because we think that's your most important job. We want you to think differently, since our incremental attempts have not really turned this tide. And we ask the Board to lead county agencies and community partners into a new way to do business and to quite simply keep children safer. If we have this many neglected children and this many parents substance abusing, we're doing something wrong. And we want to take the time this year before this budget season to say, how should we fund intervention and prevention? And basically, how can we keep innocent children alive? I'd like to introduce Cherie Kinlaw to finish up.
My name is Cherie Kinlaw, and I'd like to start off saying that I have been in the system for 16 years. It hasn't been easy for my family, since they're known all over Mendocino County for the abuse that we have suffered and the neglect that we have went through. And I bet you're wondering what we're asking you to leave with today. And we just want to let you know that we're just asking you to do your job. We're asking you to create policies that protect today's children and tomorrow's parents. Child abuse is everybody's business. We all want our children to be safe. And we're coming to a closing, so we're going to ask you if you'd like to join us for lunch in the hallway.
We have some takeaways for you, and we would ask that you go ahead and look at some of the things we have. We have a shirt, which is your CAC, your Child Abuse Prevention Acting Committee. The pinwheels are a symbol, a national symbol of child abuse prevention. You may note, out in front of City Hall area, we had our little Vista who started off your program. And Vista is a volunteer program nationwide, as is AmeriCorps and the Health Corps. Caroline planted all of those pinwheels. She went out and did it herself one day. So what you have doing and supporting this committee are a lot of community volunteers. In addition to staffing and our own Board of Supervisors, I invite you at any time to come to any of your Policy Council meetings. We meet on the third Monday of the month from 11:30 to 1:00. Your Supervisor Carrie Brown is my Vice Chair. Thank you, Carrie. And doesn't miss too many meetings because she knows she's going to get appointed to do something, as you've all figured out. So if there's any questions while we have members in the audience that may ask, we invite them also.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Brown?
Thank you, Chair Hamburg, and thank this Board for appointing me to Policy Council on Children and Youth. These are the people I work with, and they all represent groups or departments or agencies very concerned about our children here in this county. Today, we've highlighted children, well, throughout the month and especially here today. We had numerous proclamations this morning. And this Board is committed. I brought forward a resolution from the California State Association of Counties, and it passed on our consent calendar, oh, about three weeks ago, but I'd really like to read it. Resolution of the Mendocino County Board of Supervisors proclaiming 2013 as the year of the child. Now, I'm going to leave out the whereas's, but California is home to 9.5 million children, from infants and toddlers to schoolagers and teens, including our children in Mendocino County. These children are the future of our state with our investment in our children of today, representing our investment in working people, community leaders, parents, and problem solvers of tomorrow. It is therefore imperative that the elected officials, community leaders, policymakers of today prioritize California's children and consider the impact of each decision they make on all of our children today, tomorrow, and in the future. California voters approved Proposition 10 in 1998, investing in First Five California and 58 county First Five Commissions with responsibility to lead the communities in expanding early developmental and school readiness services and improving systems for children ages zero to five and their families. Each First Five Commission, California State Preschools, local Head Start programs, work in partnership with the County Board of Supervisors, as well as other public and nonprofit agencies seated on the Policy Council on Children and Youth to address the needs of our young children and their families. California counties share this dedication to the good health, school readiness, and general well-being of our children, who cannot vote, lobby, or advocate, and are dependent on the adults of today for their well-being. The President of the California State Association of Counties has challenged his colleagues to ask, how are the children? And to always consider what is best for the children and to continue focusing on the children until we can say with confidence, all the children are well. Now therefore be it resolved that the Mendocino County Board of Supervisors joins elected officials across the state, First Five Commissions, California State Preschools, Head Start, Policy Council on Children and Youth, and their many community partners in recognizing the critical importance of placing children at the core of our plans, at the heart of our purpose, and at the top of every agenda as we proclaim 2013 as the year of the child. It's a very nice resolution, and I thank CSAC President Dave Finnegan for challenging us in this way. One of the important points that I did receive out of the presentation and as part as being a representative of this Board to CSAC was the policy development of this Board of Supervisors. And as all of you know, with realignment, money is going to be, I guess, programs are going to be funded differently. But what programs are they? I feel this Board is going to be challenged if we receive a budget before we talk about the policy decisions that we need to make first, before those monies through realignment, whether it's children's services, whether it's mental health, how they are allocated and what for. I really feel we should ask our Executive, Miss Angelo, Chief Executive Officer, to bring forward some presentations from staff so we can talk about the money, set the policy before we get in to further budget discussions, as we will very soon. Thank you.
Supervisor Brown, would you like to ask someone specifically to address what you just said? I mean, I think what you're doing is you're suggesting how the Board moves forward between now and the adoption of our next budget.
That is exactly what I'm asking, because funds will be coming. And I feel it's important that the policy decisions of where those funds, it's a realignment. So it will not be the same as it has been in the past. And I think it's a challenge for this Board to get into policy discussions when we are actually going over a proposed budget. So I'm just suggesting that we need to have some agenda items, workshops, whatever that may be, from Health and Human Services Agency that will help guide us through those policy discussions.
Okay. Now, I have three supervisors who want to, is this all in response to Supervisor Brown? Because I want to stay on that subject for a second. Okay. I'm not sure who's first. One of the Johns.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor McCollum.
Well, I do support the sentiments expressed by Supervisor Brown. And, you know, I really want to thank everyone involved here and for the presentation, all the presenters, but also everyone present in support. And I'm confident everyone supports all the goals that were expressed. And then the question for us is, how do we get there and how do we allocate the available resources? And so what is the funding? What is the flexibility? What are the policies that are needed? And, you know, my comments, we're going to be, you know, we're going to be looking to the Children's Action Committee and the Policy Council on Children and Youth to be bringing forward recommendations. And we are already in the budget process. So, you know, I don't know how many agenda items we necessarily need before the Board, but we certainly need to have our community interacting with our Executive Office to make sure that when the budget is getting billed, all these concerns are taken into account. And that may very well involve at some point, you know, a presentation, an additional presentation to the Board, to the extent policy issues are in play and we have to be giving direction. But, you know, I do think the Board is going to welcome specific suggestions on, here is the flexibility you have, here is the funding you have, here are the opportunities, here's the policies you need in place. So I think generally that does go along with Supervisor Brown's concerns.
Supervisor Pinchus.
Well, to put it more bluntly, I've been involved in 10 years of budget process. And, you know, it's always really nice to say, well, let's put our dollars upstream. In other words, into our kids and our kids' program. That's a really, it's the right thing to do. There's no doubt about that. So that means, well, let's take some budgets, some money, and transfer from the criminal justice area into children's programs. And that's certainly probably the right thing to do. The only problem you have with that, though, you still have the criminal. The only problem you have with that, though, you still have the criminal element to deal with, and we're probably not even fully funding the criminal element side as far as the sheriff and the district attorney and the public defender and on and on and on, their juvenile hall and all that. So it's really hard on revenues. The real problem in this county is we don't have increasing revenues. Our revenues are just stagnant. If you look at our five-year and even our 10-year projections, it's basically no more money than we have right today. So you have hit other costs that keep rising, and that's just a fact of life. But it's really a novel thing for this Board to say, you know, we're going to change our policy, and we're going to put more money into upstream, in other words, children's programs. But the reality of it is, we're, when it comes to the budget with the stagnant revenues, we're probably not funding any area in this county, and even close to the level that we should, if we lived in a perfect world. So it's hard for, to say that we're going to commit more money, you know, in other words, ad general fund dollars to the Health and Human Services Agency budgets to increase funding sake for children's programs or direct service to our kids. You know, that's really easy to say, and politically, that's something I'd love to say. But the reality of it is, one of our major functions here in this county is dealing with the criminal element, and that's just a fact of life. And whether it's the sheriff or the DA, public defender, district attorney, all of them, juvenile hall, are just pressured to needing more money, too. So it's really, it's not a simple policy issue. It's trying to, I guess it comes down to give everybody a few bucks and hope they can do a little better job than what they do, which you folks do a great job, and I guess we're asking you to do a little better job. So I don't know, but it's not as simple. If it was simple, it's just giving you more money, I guess we could do like the federal government and just print more of it, but it's not that simple, you know? It's real family issues, I see it. And it's a real problem when we're trying to take government and government agencies and replace it with families, because nothing replaces a family unit. But it's a budgetary issue, but it's a budgetary issue that I don't think any amount of money can fully solve.
Okay. Thank you, Supervisor Pinches. You know, just a brief comment. I don't think what is being asked of the Board today is necessarily that we transfer general fund money. I think it's more that we look in a more penetrating way at what our options are, and that we be a little more creative, a little more proactive, and not, I mean, I think, I think our county has been in kind of a, operating out of a bit of a fear mode for several years, and I think it's largely because of our, you know, our revenue situation, our overall budgetary situation. I don't think we're in great shape now, and I'm sure my colleagues agree with me, but I think at the same time, there are opportunities that we're not taking advantage of, and that's what I hear more from these people, that we need to be a little bit more, maybe aggressive in the way we approach the things that are out there that we can do, short of transferring general fund money into dealing with these issues. And now I want to recognize Supervisor Jordy, and then Supervisor Brown.
Well, I support. I support Supervisor Brown's request, and I think it's a good one, and I do think it's time to reach for greatness here, and there's opportunities, I believe, for the county to do things differently, and also that might mean partnering with community groups as well as the schools. So, and later in our Supervisor Reports, I'll mention something that I think we have an opportunity to partner with the schools on relating to children. So I support your request.
Supervisor Brown?
Thank you. And Supervisor Pinches, I'm not talking about reallocating funds from our criminal justice system, this is separate. It's the way the funds are going to be coming without the strings attached, and how they are going to be allocated. To me, that is a policy issue that the Board of Supervisors should make.
Okay. I want to recognize the CEO.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to thank our community partners for the presentation. I think that it is timely, and I think that Supervisor Brown brings up a good point. I do want to remind this Board that the presentation is an information-only presentation, so you really can't take any action today. I don't think you're really asking for action. We are in the budget process, I would agree with that. I can tell you that the Board has made policy decisions, and my office follows those policy decisions. And the number-one policy decision that you have made is any unanticipated revenue goes into reserves. It's those reserves of $4 million that are going to float us when our retirement costs go up, and also those reserves that have helped as far as us not having to borrow on the trans. I think there's something in the middle, though. You know, certainly, if you want more information around our programs, we've been trying to do that, we tried to do that today, and when we have lighter calendars, we try to bring in some good news stories and talk about all those programs that county staff continue to do. So there may be something in the middle without taking direction from this Board that we could look at as far as more presentations. All five of you have asked that at one time or another, and we've tried to do that, and we can continue to do so. I think that the budget this year, I will tell you that my office is following direction, will continue to do that. We will recommend that any dollar that comes in unanticipated does go into reserves, and so, you know, we may have some robust discussions around the budget in June, but that will be our recommendation, and for every dollar we put away today, that's another dollar we're not going to have to cut next year or the year after. And I think we have some real vital programs in HHSA. Those programs that we have tried to showcase over the last couple months have been HHSA programs, and my guess is we'll continue to do so.
Okay. Supervisor Brown?
Just one final comment. I think this is kind of, with our standing committees, they would be hearing many of these concerns from community, and we've chosen not to have the standing committees. With Children's Services and the way that they're funded, that allocation will be coming without the strings attached, as we have seen in the past. And that's what concerns me. I think we need to have a bigger dialogue, and I certainly want to thank everybody for coming today, being here. I always look forward each year to this presentation. You know, it's usually a happy, fun one, maybe this hasn't been as happy and fun, but I certainly appreciate all you do for the children in our county, and we can go out and celebrate with lunch. Do you have something final?
Yes. Camille?
I sort of wanted to clarify that really the opportunity, we chose the opportunity to express this in this sort of way, not because we think general fund, but because there's been quite a bit of misunderstanding on the community level that, you know, realignment was realignment 109, all the attention to realignment, law enforcement, sheriff, all those sorts of things, which in fact did happen and has gone very, very well. However, a much bigger realignment occurred at that same period of time. And that was realignment of Social Services and the Behavioral Health Subaccount. And what that means is that the state share of that subaccount, which is significantly more, has come to the County Board of Supervisors for the authority and the responsibility. The deliverables have not changed, the outcomes that the feds expect have not changed, those things have not changed. How we deliver those outcomes and how we deliver those expectations are now up to you, and that's the point. And our department, I think we have an amazing Health and Human Service Agency. I think our Child Welfare Department are dedicated, amazing advocates who I've worked with in many, many ways for 30 years. This is not about that. This is about, we have to have a sense from the beginning, which frankly was last year, of the decisions that are being made on the ground that reflect the decisions of this Board around what we're doing and how we're doing it in some sort of a flexible way. I frankly agree with our CEO that we do not want to be using dollars irresponsibly, and that we don't want to get to where we were. It was awful. It was terrible for our kids, terrible for our CBOs, and absolutely gut-wrenching for our county partners. It was, we don't want to go there. And frankly, just that message is a really good message to give in a transparent, really responsible way, because it makes us out here go, okay, so let's reasonable our expectations. Yes, we want to change the world here, but we need to save a 10% for, you know, we just want to be a part of the conversation as we move forward down the road, so that it's not our county making decisions about how we're going to be responsible for our community, it's our community, which make up advocates, community members, the guy in line at the bank, your CBOs, your nonprofits, your for-profit businesses on the street who are handling the transient issue in Gobi Street, and our county workers that are doing it so amazingly every day. That was our point, and ultimately, it's you.
So you feel that maybe an ad hoc committee or going to a standing committee on this particular discussion is best, rather than...
I appreciate that Carmel Angela wants to sort of discuss that, and that this is information. I trust that you will, because it became very, very prevalent to us, the issues that occurred around children and youth, and frankly, because it's been a very painful three and four years for all of us.
It has.
And realignment, if we get too far down this road, you won't even know what decisions have been made on the ground that reflect your priorities, because you don't have a sense of how it changed, how the game changed with 2011 realignment, and that really is the only point. It has absolutely nothing to do with whether we're doing it correctly, because maybe we are. Those five incidents may very well not have been able to be avoided, but we have another 300, you know? And it moves us to take this opportunity in this window to say, okay, so now we have 200 million in allocations that are coming from the state that sit here in our county to make a decision about, we used to take 20 million and do this, should we take 5 million and do that? That's all I'm suggesting, to reflect the directives of the Board. And should that be a conversation that's a dialogue among all of us, or should that be a conversation that's isolated? I don't necessarily say that I have the answer to that, but I think we should ask the questions.
But my idea of doing it prior to setting a budget is, do you feel that is right on?
Yes, it seems like a bit of dialogue before we, we don't want to get into an adversarial relationship in any way, shape, or form, because we don't feel that way. So, thank you. I just wanted to clarify the 2011.
Yes, Ms. Holland.
I would invite that, so as not to make another meeting in another committee, you have a Standing Policy Council on Children and Youth, I would invite you to bring those talks to that meeting. You have established meetings, you can have the floor, okay? And I will certainly organize it and make sure that the appropriate people are there. So it's an opportunity that's already set for dates, we meet the third Monday, and so I realize that sometimes conflicts with your Board meetings, but sometimes it doesn't, too. And I, again, would like to invite you outside. Our message today also is, is that whenever you make a decision that may affect a child, always take children into consideration for any decision. Nothing is worse than going to one of our state or federal representatives, and they ask you to check a box as to what your comment is about. You have no idea how many times I've had to put in my comments, there is no box for children, okay? That is not what this county should be about. There should always be a box for children. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Supervisor McCowen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, it occurs to me that, you know, the comment that the 2011 realignment, a lot of the focus was on criminal justice realignment, and there was much less focus on the social services realignment. And along those lines, I think it would be instructive for the Board and the general public, if we did have an agenda item, maybe in the next 30 days, that would focus simply on explaining what did change with social services realignment. So, you know, I would, you know, I'm not sure the Board really needs to give direction, but, you know, the Executive Office has heard all the discussion, and I would hope that we would be able to have an agenda item, you know, focused on social service realignment, you know, set aside, you know, 30 minutes or 45 minutes, whatever it seems reasonable to, present those different issues and what has changed, what are the policy decisions that the county now has that maybe it didn't have prior to social services realignment.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Miss Angelo.
If I may comment. What we've tried to do with our quarterly budget updates is bring in whatever programs there have been questions about, and as you recall, there for a while, we were doing quarterly updates on AB 109. So what we could do for our third quarter update, which I believe I said was May 13th or 14th in there, is that we could do this particular topic. So it could be agendized as part of our third quarter budget update.
Okay. And what date would that be, again?
It's on my...
May 13th.
It's on the CEO's report.
Yeah, it's on my CEO report.
On May the 13th?
Yeah.
14th?
Tuesday, May 14th is third quarter budget report. What we could do as part of that budget report is work with Health and Human Services, they could work with their community partners, not us, and then there could be a presentation on, you want it on the 2011 realignment, so that the Board could have a better understanding as far as what's happening with the realignment dollars. I think it's appropriate to do that.
I think that's a good result from this discussion this morning. Supervisor McCowen?
Well, and I think that is fine to include it as part of the budget report, but I don't want it to get lost within the budget report, you know, so that, you know, and to me, it really does need to be a global presentation on social services realignment and what that really means, and what options the county may have that it didn't have before. So, you know, providing all that gets covered, I'm fine with it being part of the budget report.
CEO Angelo? Sound good to you?
It sounds fine. I do think it could be very nicely coupled with the budget, and we could give it an appropriate amount of time.
Very good.
Thanks.
And I bet a few of these people might even come to the meeting. Yeah? Maybe? Okay, that'd be great.
I hope so.
Okay. Do we have any formal item to do out of this? I don't think we, there's anything that we need a motion on specifically. We'll just accept the report. And thank you all so much for coming in, and we will adjourn to the foyer. And we will be coming back at 1:30.
Mr. Chair. Put your pins on.
I'm sorry. What? Okay, the Board will be adjourned at lunch recess, followed immediately by closed session at 1:30, sitting concurrently as the Board of Supervisors and the Air Quality Management District Board of Directors. 2:45, and the Board is back in session following closed session in which we gave direction to staff regarding labor negotiations. The Board also unanimously appointed Bob Scaglione, Bob Scaglion, regardless, Bob anyway, to be our new Air Quality Management Director, or, excuse me, Air Pollution Control Officer. And we did that sitting as the Air Quality Management District Board of Directors. And we will now go back to our regular agenda, and County Counsel, I'd like to turn it over to you for the item that was brought to us by Mr. Pierce.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. It came to the attention of County Counsel and to the Chief Executive Officer late this morning that the Sheriff's Office had an urgent off-agenda item matter that arose after the agenda was published. I, at this point, I would turn the podium over to the Sheriff's Office, which can explain the urgency and the timing of this matter, and if the Board so chooses to do so, the Board could place this on the agenda today as an item that arose after the agenda was published, if it so chooses.
Supervisor McCowen?
And based on your review, do you believe that the Board can make the appropriate findings?
Well, I'm not privy to all the facts, Supervisor, that's why I'm asking the Sheriff's Office to present the facts and the timing. I just got a very brief, sketchy description, so I'm not in a position to give a real good answer.
So first, we will hear from the Sheriff or from Captain Pierce, and then we will make a determination whether, you know, by motion, if we have four-fifths vote to go ahead and hear the item?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. The first vote would be whether or not you choose to place it on the agenda.
Okay.
And if that is an affirmative vote by four-fifths...
Then we go forward.
Then you go forward and deal with the substance.
Okay. Sheriff, are you going to do it, or is Tim?
I am, but I have my great technical advisors behind me.
Okay.
Behind me is Captain, of course, Captain Tim Pierce, and also Vicky Stout Phillips, or Vicky Phillips Stout. And Vicky is the inmate services coordinator. She is the person that we're able to say that our programs in the jail are running successful, they're filled, they're run appropriately with members of our community. And... filled, they're run appropriately with members of our community. And Vicki is the, I guess, the traffic cop. She's a manager to make sure when people come in, they're correctly checked out and so forth. And over the last several months, as, as I've had a chance to discuss with you several times, our jail population is increasing to the point where it's, it's becoming a concern. And certainly, the officer safety is something that is a primary concern, but secondary to that are the programs that we offer our inmates in, in conjunction with AB 109, our ability to reduce recidivism, as well as to fulfill our, our moral and legal obligations of offering programs to as many eligible inmates as possible. And unfortunately, when our jail was built, it wasn't built for AB 109 in mind. And we have two and a half classrooms in the jail for, strictly for inmate programs. And to be quite honest, we're out of room. And as everyone in this room knows, our, our Department of Public Health at 1120 South Dora has suffered a huge mess. And when the modular were brought in to replace the mess, Vicki was able to talk to them and examine some classrooms and realize that if we could accelerate the ability to get a classroom, when they're done renting it to the county at 1120 South Dora, if we, using inmate services monies to, if we could purchase it and bring it, we would almost immediately be able to, not double, but certainly increase by one and a half times the size of our classrooms for inmates. And so I apologize for not, for this not going through the, the regular process of getting it on the agenda. We're in a situation right now where one of the, or the building that we're looking at is scheduled to be shipped out on Thursday, back to its home in the Sacramento Valley. And we're, we are hoping to have this placed on the agenda today. And we would discuss with you why we think this is the right building to buy for our inmates right now. And in theory, we could have it up and running in about two weeks and improving the quality of programs that we offer the inmates.
Okay, questions by board members. Supervisor Pinches?
So the urgency is that if you don't make, do this by Thursday, the facility is leaving?
This goes back to Sacramento, and we, of course, could still buy it.
But you'd have to bring it back over.
But there are some costs involved with transporting it back to our county.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion for the urgency item.
Second.
Okay, we have motion, second, discussion of the motion. Okay, hearing none. Tim, I think we should do a roll call.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
Supervisor McCowen?
Yes.
Supervisor Pinches?
Yes.
Supervisor Jurdie?
Yes.
Chair Hamburg?
Yes. Okay, the motion passes. So this item is now formally before the board. And I want you to continue, Sheriff.
Thank you very much. I've covered most of it. This, the finances of this do come from the Inmate Services Fund, which we have the monies, and we're asking to purchase it as a fixed asset for the county, and we'll be working with GSA for the maintenance and so forth. We do not intend for this building to be a financial burden on GSA or the county. We're prepared to work with GSA on all necessary costs of maintaining this building. So it's, it's not like we're asking to buy an expensive item and asking them to maintain it. We understand what's necessary, and we're willing to work with GSA on this.
Supervisor Brown?
Thank you, Chair Hamburg. One important component to this is we do not have an agenda summary. So can you please tell us what we would be looking at in a proper motion?
Thank you, Supervisor. What I would appreciate is a motion that would allow the Sheriff's Office to expend $33,000 total cost, total that's including the, the building and the transportation and the setup. And this is for a 12 by 40 modular to be installed on county property, which we're, we're ready for. And it'll, it'll go to the county.
Mr. Chair, just to jump in here.
Yes, yes.
Excuse me, Chair. So, but the motion would include the, the purchase of a fixed asset, I should say that, county fixed asset of?
Okay, Supervisor Pinches?
That sounds a little bit high for modular. I mean, what's, is it, it's used?
I understand that. And it is, it is used, however, last year, a new roof was put on and a new HVAC system in 2011 was put throughout it. And the cost includes, of course, transportation, but also the leveling, includes the skirting around it, includes the ADA access. We do not have plumbing in this. We don't need plumbing because we have restroom and drink, drinking water facilities next door to it.
So it's going to be paid for out of the, what fund is it?
Inmate Services Fund.
And, yeah, there's plenty of money in that fund.
There are, Supervisor.
Okay, so we, we have the, the basic form of a motion. How are you doing that, Tim? You have something?
Possible motion would be approval of purchase of modular structure in the amount of $33,000 in addition of said structure to the county's list of fixed assets.
Okay, Supervisor McCowen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, you answered the, the basic question, which was how much? And so all of those initial costs will come out of the Inmate Services Fund, including reimbursement to GSA for whatever work they may do in assisting with the setup. And, you know, and once it's in place, it still has to be hooked up to electricity and heating system and, and all of that. But all of those costs will be borne out of the Inmate Services Fund?
They are, and actually, all those costs, Supervisor, will be borne of the $33,000. The company will be, leveling will be setting up, will be skirting and hooking up the electrical forest. So we've, we've worked with them, knowing that GSA right now is quite busy because of the, the public health situation.
And then the ongoing costs of maintenance and operations such as utilities and all that, there'd be a prorated amount, and that also would be paid by inmate services?
We haven't got the nuts and bolts to that yet, but it's my intention to work on a, an agreement with them exactly for that.
Thank you.
Okay, the board had a chance to hear a preliminary motion. Is there any board member who would care to offer that motion? Tim, hold on.
If I can please amend the motion just to include the clarification that that is paid for out of the Inmate Services Fund.
I was going to suggest that.
Do we build a new jail in the Inmate Services Fund?
Okay. So Supervisor Brown, are you making that motion?
I am making that motion, and I was going to suggest the, that we include it correctly. So I, I move the motion.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, we have motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, if not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Okay, we can go back now to Supervisor's report. Supervisor Jurdie?
So I was contacted by Don Armstrong, the Superintendent for Bragg Schools, and Pilar Gray, the Nutrition Director in Fort Bragg, and about the fact that the funding for the gardens at the Fort Bragg Schools, as apparently the gardens at perhaps every school in Mendocino County.
Every school.
Has been funded out of a state grant that was given to the school districts over the last 12 years, and that that funding is changing. And now, instead of a handful of school districts throughout California receiving these funds, it's, the state is going to allocate the funds on a formula basis statewide, which means instead of Mendocino County receiving, schools receiving $850,000, it will, they will only, the county public health department will receive a total of about $100,000. So it's a pretty substantial drop. I'm seeing some nodding heads. It sounds like most of the supervisors, if not everybody, has already heard this, but for the benefit of our audience. So it, it was also brought to my attention that Humboldt County Schools have submitted a proposal to the county government in Humboldt proposing that they would be, partner with the county to help sign up family members and parents with the CalFresh program. And although it's not exactly the same thing that the schools were doing with the gardens program, it is related because it's both related to nutrition. And the schools in Humboldt are pointing out that, that they're already interviewing parents and asking the parents if, if their, if their children are eligible for free or reduced lunch. It would, it's, it sounds plausible to me that the schools, in asking that question, would only need to ask a few additional questions to also sign up those parents for the CalFresh program. The schools also point out that they're doing nutrition education with the kids and with, and with the families. So the families, rather than just receiving a CalFresh card, would also get the benefit of understanding that, okay, you could buy these healthy items and actually improve your health. So it seems like a win-win. And then finally, the schools contact, in their material they gave me, they included a report from a statewide organization which showed that in Mendocino County, although the allocation of funds to Mendocino County has grown each year, the amount of money that was expended because through people signing up has actually gone down in the last three years. And so there's this widening gap between amount of money available to Mendocino County families and the amount of money going to the Mendocino County families. And so it all leads me to think that, hey, this Humboldt County proposal, if modified for the Mendocino County schools, could be beneficial. They're really in a good position to sign up the parents, and, and this could help them partially fill that funding gap that they're going to be experiencing this year. So I, you know, every school, as I understand it, in Mendocino County has a community garden. They have nutrition programs, and I think they're really well positioned to, to deal with this. So I, you know, you, maybe some of you have already done this. I forwarded the information over to Doug Gurkin over at the Social Services and hoping that he can get back to us, you know, evaluating the Humboldt County proposal. I understand it's working its way through Humboldt. If they go ahead with it, it seems like it would be plausible that we could go ahead with something like that, too. So that was, it was interesting today, we had so much focus on children and, and programs for kids. And it seems like this has been a really successful program in Mendocino County for the kids. And, and this looks like an opportunity for the county to help keep this program going at, at no cost to the county. So that was something I wanted to just mention, maybe mostly for the benefit of the audience at home. But, and the other thing is, I will not be able to attend the meeting, or the event here that was recognized with the proclamation this Saturday because there's, there are two events on the coast I'm going to. But primarily, every year, the Noyo Food Forest, which is located, their biggest garden is at the Fort Bragg High School, every year for the last seven years has had an Earth Day celebration where they have cooking classes and, and the gardens are on display and events for everybody from kids on up. And so I'm volunteering there on Saturday for that. So I won't be here in Ukiah, I'll be in Fort Bragg on Saturday. But that's just another good event that, you know, takes place every year in Fort Bragg.
Thank you, Dan. John?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
While we're on, while we're on this subject.
Yeah, go ahead, John.
I can't believe you said at one time the state was giving our, to put gardens in this county $800,000, and now it's down to 100,000.
It's just a part, a partial funding of, it's the funding that comes to the county, and partially gardens were supported by staff as well.
My point is, I've put in quite a few vegetable gardens in my life, and it only takes a few bucks to put in a big garden. I mean, I don't get this. I mean, if you have the labor force, you have the kids in the school. I don't see where it takes, I mean, all of a sudden, it takes state money to a school to have a garden plot? I don't get it.
But it funded, it funded the garden coordinators, their helpers, the curriculum.
That's what I'm saying. It's funding a garden coordinator. I think they should be funding a school teacher. And the, and the garden should be put in as an effort between the, the school kids and maybe a couple of parents and somebody knows a little something about planting corn. I don't get this, where, where all of a sudden, we're stymied by putting in gardens in our schools because there's not hundreds of thousands of dollars come in. I can't believe we've come to that as a society.
Well, maybe we should have the Gardens Project come, come before the board.
That would be great.
We didn't hear from miles and, you know.
I mean, there's a lot of good gardens out there.
Terry with Ukiah Unified.
They're really.
This is really a school district issue, but it just appalls me to think that.
Well, before you get appalled, maybe we should learn more about it.
And the grant funding.
You know, I've been pretty impressed by what they've done. I mean, they're not like, you know, they're very expensive.
For $800,000?
I don't know. I don't know about the cost, but, you know, we could have them come to the board. John?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. It is a lot more than just putting in the garden, though, though there's a nutritional, educational component that does go to it. And, you know, I, I think it, it may be very appropriate to have an agenda item, you know, to go into the issues that Supervisor Jurdie has raised.
And I'd like to work with Supervisor Jurdie to bring that forward.
Okay, thanks.
Excellent.
Well, I guess my point is, we always talk about, there's just not enough money to fund our schools and everything. And when we're spending like the state $800,000 in Mendocino County to put in gardens, it just seems a little bit...
You know, we just had two supervisors say they want to do an agenda item on it. So you can, you can ask all your questions to people who actually have the information. John?
What a concept.
Please.
So the North Coast Railroad Association met. Some of you have probably...
Is there still a North Coast Railroad authority?
Johnny, don't you have something to do?
Well, no, isn't it a railroad authority?
I said, I said enough for you to know what it was, didn't I? So we'll call it the NCRRA.
Okay, let's go. Come on.
I believe you are right, Supervisor, as always. And we did meet, some of you may have heard, we revisited a resolution that was passed by NCRRA in June of 2011 that certified an EIR and approved a project for the resumption of railroad operations from the southern end of the line north to Willets. And the NCRRA was promptly sued by friends of the Heale River and Californians for alternatives to toxics. And that lawsuit has been winding its way through the, the legal process. The attorneys for the operator of the rail line, Northwestern Pacific Company, presented a, a letter, essentially a demand to NCRRA that said you didn't need to certify an EIR in order to resume railroad operations. The approval for railroad operations was already accomplished by the lease that NCRRA had with NWP Co. and also with approvals that were given by other federal agencies. And following a review of that letter, NCRRA passed a resolution that rescinded, it didn't touch the EIR, but it rescinded those portions of the June 2011 resolution that purported to approve a project for the resumption of rail operations, again, on the theory that no further action was needed by NCRRA to approve a project for the resumption of rail operations. So that, no doubt, will be the subject of further legal arguments, and more will be revealed about what the court system thinks, thinks of that argument. Then on April 16th, Supervisor Hamburg and I met with the other members of the Indian Gaming Commission, as referenced in the CEO report, and considered applications. And the, the main beneficiaries of, of that process, as in recent previous years, was the Sheriff's Office, the District Attorney, also Hopland Fire, the Hopland Public Utilities District, related to improving infrastructure for distribution of water through their system, making it more reliable for all users of the system. Leightonville Ambulance, Redwood Valley Fire, there were smaller grants for Children's Program through Health and Human Services Agency, and also for some equipment for Little Lake Fire. The emergency medical services issue, I think, has been pretty well covered. I'm sure we all attended at least one of those meetings. On April 17th, the Board of Retirement met, and the big issue there was for the board to make decisions on how the unfunded liability and future unfunded liability will be amortized. And in addition to the county, the Board of Retirement is also responsible for the retirement system for the, the county courts and the Russian River Cemetery District. We had a letter from the Cemetery District. We had a very comprehensive presentation from presiding Judge Henderson, and also a comprehensive presentation from Assistant CEO Kyle Knopp. And they were all essentially to the same point. And I thought Judge Henderson spoke very well to the point that the court... very well to the point that the court system is in a very serious financial situation currently. They have already severely cut back their personnel, their services, and they are under the gun to have further severe cuts in the current budget process. And part of understanding the retirement system is, yes, there is a very large unfunded liability, but the House isn't burning down. There's, the projections are, there's funding available to pay the retirement benefits for the next 21 years. So, yes, there's a lot of concern, it's not necessarily to the point of an emergency. So the point that Judge Henderson made, and also that Assistant CEO Knopp made, was it's not necessary for the Board of Retirement to take this action now to dramatically ramp up the cost to the participants. This situation could continue to be evaluated on an annual basis, and hopefully the economy does improve, revenues improve, and further action could be taken at that time. Nevertheless, on a four to three vote, the Board of Retirement did vote to fairly significantly alter, not the way the current unfunded liability will be dealt with, but the way that future unfunded liabilities will be dealt with. So the current existing unfunded liability will be amortized over a 27-year period. Any future increase in the unfunded liability, either because the assumed rate of return was not met, or because there might be a change in assumptions or, or methods of calculating costs, will be amortized over an 18-year period. That'll come back as a formal policy at our next meeting, but it's very likely that, that it would be confirmed by the board at that time. So, you know, there will be some additional cost driven on to the county as well as the courts. And part of the argument to me also, to not support driving the additional cost, was that the actuaries made it very clear that the, the action of the board, or it wasn't really required, there's, there was a certain amount of flexibility in what number the board might choose to land on. They had their recommendation, which was 15 or 20 years, but it wasn't beyond the realm of, of reasonableness to set it at 25 years. And so their, their word was that it was a subjective decision. They do intend to come back in the near future with a decision, a discussion about revising the assumed rate of return, and which is currently 7.75%. And they were very clear that in that discussion, they don't think it's nearly as subjective to the board, they don't think the board has nearly as much flexibility. So they made it very clear they're going to be recommending a downward adjustment in that assumed rate of return, and the only real question probably is going to be, will the board drop the assumed rate of return a quarter of a percentage point or a half a percentage point? Either of which, of course, will have a very significant cost factor for the county. So that's the, the report out of the Board of Retirement.
So they're kicking the can down the road, it's just not as big a can now, huh?
No, they're, they're really not kicking the can down the road. You know, they're, they're telling the county and the other participants, pay now, or, or at least pay in real time, because the, the factor with the 27-year amortization is the first 15, 16 years, something like that, or negative amortization. With an 18-year amortization schedule, that's, that's not the case.
So that will significantly raise, what their action is doing, significantly raise the county, the county's employer's contribution rate?
Contribution.
So that won't affect this 2012, 13, or 13, 14 budget, but it'll affect the next budget?
1415.
Yeah, 1415, and that'll be assuming that the county retirement system does not make its assumed rate of return, and there is an unfunded liability, then yes, it will drive additional cost onto the county.
Significantly.
Well, that'll depend on the amount of the unfunded liability, but the situation we're in, any additional cost is significant.
But we're talking about unfunded liability beyond this amount that we're currently amortizing over the 27-year period.
Beyond the 120 million.
Beyond the 128.6 million.
Is that what it is?
Yeah, and it's, you know, as John said, it's, it's negative for the first 14 years.
Okay.
The first, it's not until the, the, excuse me, it's not until the 16th year that we're actually getting into positive territory.
So my future plans are, I need to die young.
Well, you know, this just underscores.
No, you've got 20 years, there's, there's going to be enough money for 20 years for the county retirement system.
This just underscores our, our upcoming issues with labor.
Well, we're, the county financial position is fragile.
It's very fragile.
And I, I'd like to, oh, did you have a question, Supervisor?
I want to, I, I do, not of this, I just want to make a comment at the end.
Okay, well, I, I have one more item from my report.
Okay, Carrie.
I'd like to close with some good news.
Good.
On April 18th, I attended the graduation of BI, which, which is the operator of our day reporting system under AB 109, and there were 18 graduates. All 18 graduates were present. They had successfully completed the program, part of their graduation. One gentleman managed to decline, but part of the requirement was each one had to stand up there and essentially make a speech. And like I say, one, one guy managed to get out of that. Everyone else actually stood up, made a speech about, you know, their experience, and it was very evident that this was a life-changing program.
Absolutely.
And it was very touching to hear their stories of what they had gone through, you know, a lot of them talked about how they got where they got to put them in the system, but then they talked about what they had gained back by going through the system. And, you know, they'd gone from being outcasts in their families, unemployed, you know, constantly in trouble with the law, to in many cases, getting reunited with their families, being gainfully employed, feeling positive about themselves. It was very clear, and I'd say also that Judge Mormon and Chief Probation Officer Brown both were part of the, the program, and it's, it's very clear that our local criminal justice departments made a very wise decision in recommending BI to us.
Good.
They have a very effective program.
Yes, I do.
And it's, it, it was very inspiring to attend that. They plan to have future graduations, I think, about every six months.
Great.
So if you have a chance, the next time around, I encourage us all to attend. And I, I also would encourage the executive office to possibly work with the chief probation officer to see if we could schedule a presentation by BI now that we have a track record.
Sure.
I think it'd be good for the community to hear some of the positive things that are coming out of AB 109.
John, were these graduates, were they all state inmates that had come back to county?
Yes, yes.
I'm not 100% certain on that, but you might be right.
But were the most, for sure, the most part of them right?
Again, I'm not certain. And it may, it may have been people that otherwise would have been sent to state prison.
And if they couldn't come to the day reporting center, we have sent people to them in the different isolated parts of the community, is the way I understood the program. But it's been a year, year and a half, so it would be nice to have a presentation.
I just, maybe this is for an agenda item, but I have a question. I wonder how many of those 18 graduates have got some sort of employment or something lined up after they go to state?
Well, I know from what they said, there is, it sounded like there was a fair number of them. That, I believe that's part of the program, you go get a job.
Mm-hmm. And as one gentleman said, this is the first time in his life he's ever graduated, completed something.
From something.
And graduated.
Mm-hmm.
Which, you know, kind of tears your heart. I was not able to attend, but I did read.
And it, it was a full range of people, too. They had some very young participants, they had some people that had been banging their head against the wall for 40 years, and had finally, you know, found, found a way out of the.
That was me, but I didn't know I graduated.
Okay, Johnny, do you have anything?
No, I said no.
Yeah, you have, I, I agree. And I just, you know, the only thing I want to mention is that same weekend, that there's a lot going on, May 4th, in Wollala, Action Network is doing their big Cinco de Mayo fundraiser, so I will be in Wollala that day, and the next day, May 5th, is the annual Pepper Martin softball game, which is the, the big benefit for the Elk Community Center. So I'll be, I'll be in Wollala, and then Elk, Elk is 5-5, May 5th. And that's a really good time. That's, you know, the entire community of Elk comes out once a year to play a softball game in honor of a, a guy from, a guy who lives in Elk and has lived there forever, who was a fan of the St. Louis Cardinals, which is a team I grew up with, and though it's called Pepper Martin after an actual Cardinal baseball player from the Gas House gang days in the 1930s. So, anyway, that's what I'll be doing that weekend. The only other thing I want to mention is that on, on Friday, there's a pretty important meeting that I'll be attending in Santa Rosa on the Route 1 corridor project, which is a part of our, you know, overall broadband strategy, and it'll be attended by the economic development folks from Sonoma County and their IT department, and a couple of county supervisors, Carrillo, Efren Carrillo will be there, maybe Mike McGuire as well, I'm not sure. And we'll be taking down the broadband alliance people from Mendocino County, so that's going to be happening at nine o'clock on Friday. And anybody who wants to kind of know what's going on with GBB, you should go to mendocino broadband.org, and you can see kind of how our applications are faring. And one thing that's particularly interesting is, and, and not something that's a big surprise, but both Comcast and AT&amp;T are fighting us at the PUC and saying that, you know, we're moving into territory that they claim, and.
Then tell them to provide service.
And both the complaints and the responses are, are online, so you can read those. But one of the things we'll be discussing on Friday is our strategy to deal with those two behemoths who, you know, it, it is kind of like David and Goliath over in Sacramento, you know, and you can guess which we are. So, so, you know, we're, we're fighting for it, and, you know, it won't be till June that, till the PUC makes any kind of a final judgment on these, but, you know, I don't think it's any big surprise that the big telecoms are out to get us.
Does David have a shot?
Uh, we, we definitely have a shot, you know, but don't forget, this Route 1 corridor project is kind of our fallback position, which is the, you know, Sonoma County, Sonoma County Connect, working with the BAMC on the, the smaller project, which is Branscombe to Westport to Bodega Bay to Petaluma. So, anyway.
And Golden Bear Broadband is the 16 county.
Golden Bear Broadband is the big middle mile project. And again, mendocino broadband.org, that's a really good website, and it keeps you up on all the information of what's happening both here and in Sacramento. So, thank you.
Chair Hamburg?
Yes, ma'am, that's right. You wanted the last word?
Ashley, it may not be, but I just wanted to respond back to Supervisor Pinches, and don't expect him to say anything, you don't have to respond, Johnny. But when, when you talk about the 800,000, it was the way they were allocating funds, but that impacts not just, it's not just the garden projects, it's ROP projects through the entire county. So it's not just the gardens, and I'm sorry if that's what you thought.
You're going to let her have the last word, John?
Yep.
Okay, well, with that, we will be adjourned. Thank you very much.